Thank you.
So we can adjourn this meeting so we can open the next one.
City Council met in closed session to have a conference with its labor negotiator. The employee organizations are listed on the special city council agenda. There's a presentation made by the city manager and upon completion of that presentation, guidance was given, but there was no reportable action taken. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. Just for the record, Councilwoman Alvalos will be right back. And can I get a motion to adjourn? The hearing? Yeah. Can we check? Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing today? Thank you for being here. Hi, Susan. All right. I'm going to call this meeting to an end, a special South Gate City Council. At this time, can we get roll call, please? Present.
I'm sorry, Mayor Davila.
Present.
Vice Mayor Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Alvalos.
Present.
Councilmember Tavo.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz is at Houston. City Manager Houston.
Here.
City Attorney Salina.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll go on to a public hearing, which we have item number one.
The city council will consider A, conducting a public hearing on the city's vacancies, and B, receiving and filing the status update report on vacancies and compliance with the California Government Code 3502.3.
Thank you. I'm going to ask our city manager, the reason why we have this public hearing, a special meeting, can you explain that, please?
Certainly, there's always, every year, interesting new laws that come down from our state legislature. And they, I think the intent is to help. Sometimes that works, sometimes we're not sure. In this case, the latest bill that just became active this year is a requirement to have a public hearing to present vacancies and to have that presented at a meeting before a budget session. And I'll pass it over to our Director of Human Resources to fill in any additional color to that explanation before he presents.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, Council. Yeah, what City Manager Houston was saying is correct. This law became effective January 1st of this year, and it mandates that we have a public hearing and present to all of you a report on our vacancies before the next budget can be adopted. So this is a brand-new requirement, and we're going to have to do it every fiscal year, at least once every fiscal year. So, Yadid, if you can, so I'm just going to go through real quick on a couple items just to give you some background, but I have to go through all the vacancies and where they stand and some of our efforts. I'll try to move through this rather quickly. Yadid, if you would. So as mentioned, in September 2024, this is when the governor signed into law this particular requirement. And really what it is, is that the California Legislature has recognized the fact that vacancies and the troubles that all public agencies throughout the state are having in recruiting is becoming something of an issue that the state wants to address. And so in doing so, we're making this presentation. And it's, obviously vacancies, as you can see in the last slide, require our employees to take on heavier workloads, there were some burnout, increased turnovers, and could negatively affect the impact of the delivery of public services. Next slide. So as mentioned before, this became effective at the first of this year, and it adds a new government code provision, making this a requirement, and it applies to all public agencies, whether they have organized labor associations such as we or not. And in our city, for those, just as a reminder, we have five recognized employee associations or public unions. And those are our Police Officer Association, our Police Management Association, that constitutes our police department. And then our municipal, our City Hall and our Public Works folks, they organize under either the Municipal Employees Association, which are all the hard-working frontline guys that you'll see out there. Our professional Our Professional Management Association are very technical experts and some of our supervisors. And our Division Management Associations are deputy directors and some of our high-level division managers. As mentioned, this has to be presented to you all at least once every fiscal year. And also, if any of the city associations wish to make a presentation, they may. I provided them notice. I don't believe any of them want to make a presentation, but they are certainly welcome to do so at the conclusion, and the law requires that we give them that opportunity as well. And the purpose here is to provide you with an update on the vacancies. So what we had to do is for fiscal year 2425, we have 338 budgeted full-time positions. Now, we took a snapshot in time, so things fluctuate, they move around all the time. So this is from May of, I believe, May of 2025. And on that date, we froze in time, we had 55 vacancies. So real quick, you can see some of those lists. I'm going to have to go through each one of them. So I'm just, Yadid, if you can cycle to the next one. These are some of the other positions that are vacant, some more, and some more. So you can see that we have quite a few vacancies that I see. Now, this, there's a lot of reasons for it, and I'm going to go through that. But our overall vacancy rate in the city, although it looked like there's a lot of positions, our overall vacancy rate was 16.57%. So it's still below that 20% line is what the state determines is really crucial. And so we are slightly less than that, although 16.57% is nothing to brag about, but it is below the 20% line. But you can see our Police Officer Association, they're above that line, they're 22.6%. Our Police Management Association, 0%. And that's because we do a wonderful job in training and recruiting and mentoring our police officers into being the managers that later stay with the organization and really demonstrate great leadership. In our Municipal Employees Association, it's a 13.7%. But you can see in our Professional Management Association, it's at 22.2%. So it's above that 20% line. Now DMA, that's our division managers, we have three vacancies because they're 11-strong. So of those three vacancies, one is currently being, it will be filled, one's frozen, and one is in the process of recruitment. So even though it seems high, it's because they have 11 people and we have three positions which are not yet filled, or one won't be filled. Go ahead. So real quick, the status of these vacancies. So we have a clerical assistant, this person's in the Community Development Department, and this position's going to be on hold due to the concerns with the city's budget. So that's a reason why this position's remaining vacant. Code Enforcement Officer, I'm going to lump the Code Enforcement Officer, Code Enforcement Supervisor, those have gone through a couple iterations of recruitment since I've been here, and we'll find a great person, and then that person will pull out, or we just won't have good people on the list. So we have done the best, we keep trying to figure out different ways, and with our new Community Development Director and I, we've been kind of brainstorming different ways to improve and increase those efforts. So we did hire one Code Enforcement Officer very recently into that position from the Police Department. We took him from Darren, put him over there. Next slide. Housing Inspector and Housing Specialist, our Housing Division. You can see that there's, the Housing Inspector says pending a requisition request, but we kind of have that one a bit on hold as well, pending some considerations with the budget. The same is true with Housing Specialists. So in our Housing Department, we're waiting to determine how we can best effectuate that, and likely definitely the two Housing Specialists are on hold. Management Analyst, we have two vacancies, but you can see we've just filled one June 16th. So remember, this was a snapshot in time from May 17th. So we have an individual, another internal promotion, successful internal candidate was placed in that position. Next slide, please. Senior Secretary, this one's in the Community Development Department, this one's also on hold, and likely may not be filled. Accounting and Finance Manager, this is one of those positions that I mentioned to you was with DMA, currently out for recruitment. The recruitment closes on Monday, we're looking at those applications now and hoping to get Louis over here some assistance in helping him on some of the accounting functions. And our Budget and Procurement Manager, we have it as a vacancy, but we also have an internal candidate that was successful and has been, yeah. Yeah, he was just promoted on June 16th. So again, this is one of those positions that, of those 11, the three were vacant, but another internal candidate was successful in competing for that position. Next slide. Business License Inspector, this position is on hold and probably likely to be eliminated because of some ways that we're, oh, let's see if this works. Because of some of the concerns of how we're going to be managing business licensing. We have an Information Systems Technician, again, we're pending recruitment on that, we'll see. We're also looking at how we're going to move forward with budgetary concerns. Senior Accountant, we have that one currently in the process of recruitment. So that's still open and pending. Rec Coordinator, at the time, pending requisition request. This Transit Service Coordinator, this position has gone through, we've re-titled it, reclassified it, we've redistributed its duties, we've done everything we can to find a qualified candidate. And right now, Steve is growing a great internal candidate into the position, we just need to make sure that she has enough experience, but we have somebody. But that, this has been one of those positions, it's just so difficult to find a qualified candidate. So Steve's mentoring somebody internally to be able to take over that position. Associate Engineer, I believe this one is, what his plan would be to, I believe, reclassify that one later to an Assistant Engineer. Deputy City Engineer, this is that, one of those other Division Management Association, this one's currently on hold, will be frozen. Our Electrician Positions and Down at the City's Yard, these are also very difficult to fill. We've gone through lots of iterations of recruitments, trying to find the right candidates, and I have been in conversation with our superintendent there in hopes that we can end with Art on how we can maybe reimagine and reconfigure this so that we can get some qualified electricians. We need them, we got a good crew down there now, but they're really overworked, so we're working on that. Facilities Maintenance Technician, we have an eligibility list established, and I believe we're working on hiring for that one. Journey Electrician, again, this is a very difficult position to fill, same thing, just all the electricians are very difficult to find, the qualified candidate meets our needs. Principal Civil Engineer, these positions, I think we've done everything we can over the last few years to find qualified candidates for this as well. Incredibly difficult to find qualified candidates. And in conversations that I had with Art today, we're going to be reworking and reorganizing a bit within the Engineering Department to meet the needs of the department. So these positions, I believe one will be frozen, one's going to be reclassified to another position. Senior Works Public, Senior Public Works Management Analyst, also a difficult position to fill. These are very specialized positions, so the pool of candidates is really small. So we do what we can, but unfortunately, this one hasn't been filled and it's currently on hold. Sewer Maintenance Worker, again, these are positions that's just so difficult, but we are working on getting those done. And I believe this one is pending recruitment. Street and Sewer Superintendent, the gentleman that we had in the position, just late last year resigned, I believe he's now the superintendent down over in Linwood, I believe is where he went. So he had a better opportunity, so we've been working on getting this position. The position's under review, so that way we have it appropriately classified, and so we can recruit for it. Street Maintenance Worker, we have an eligibility list established. And then the Water Distribution Operator, we try to find great guys for this position too, but it's a specialized position, so oftentimes it's difficult to recruit for those positions. Civilian Custody Officer, our jailers, we have an eligibility list generated, but they have to go through the police background process, so that takes some time. Same thing with the Community Service Officer, the police background, because they need to be of a certain moral character and have a clean background, takes a lot longer for us to hire them. So they're in the process. Our Crime Scene Forensic Specialist, two vacancies are on hold and likely be on hold through the next fiscal year. Intermediate Account Clerk, we have an eligibility list generated, and we're currently in background. Office Assistant for Police is on hold. And Police Dispatcher, we have three vacancies, and we're coming up with some ways where we can try to implement new programs, and I'll talk about a little bit later, Training and Development Program for employees within our organization to try out some other positions. And I believe we have a couple Police Record Specialists that are in the process of learning that job, to see if they like it. So we're trying to find ways to give employees internally opportunities to move into some bigger, better positions. But it's also traditionally a difficult position to recruit for, lots of demand, but small supply, so to speak. Police Officer, 14 vacancies. We've talked about this before, we get plenty of applications, but the standard the Southgate Police Department has for the people that will work here as our police officers is high, and it's for good reason, because we have a great group of police officers that go out there and really know how to be professional. And in order to do that, you have to really vet each and every applicant. So although you might have a pile of applicants, it's like, how many, you got one diamond in that pile, and that's really what we're looking for. So it is, I know the chief and his staff work diligently, trying to make sure that we are pursuing every avenue to vet these potential candidates. Technical Services Managers in the Police Department as well, we're working on getting the candidate, a successful candidate, also a very technical position over in the Police Department. The gentleman that we lost was, I think, a huge impact on the Police Department when he left us, but he left for bigger and brighter things, so we understand. So that's sort of an encapsulation of our vacancies. Now, the way our recruitment process is, is that when, anytime a new position is open, we first review that job spec, that's the job description. And we go through there and we update it. We want to make sure that it accurately reflects the needs of the department, or the division, or whatever that may be at the time, that the recruitment is set to go. Once that's been finalized, which is a meet-and-confer process that Human Resources engages with the appropriate Employee Association, once it's finalized and approved, we then post the position, and we publish it primarily on governmentjobs.com, which you've heard me talk about all the time. Here's where you can go, go to our citiesouthgate.org and hit the Jobs tab, and it'll take you to our open jobs to apply. But we also, if it's more specialized or technical, we oftentimes will ask the department head involved, where else could we post this to generate some interest, so specialized places. We've been using an online application tracking system through NeoGov, it's their insight program. So when you apply, it comes in, the application comes in, and we can preset parameters so that we can analyze all of the applications very quickly through the computer, and it provides an algorithm, and it assigns points, and so it'll line up those applicants from best to worst, or ones that aren't even qualified. Now, we review those by hand to make sure that the computer's not lying to us, but we do try to sort to make sure that we have them organized in the best possible way. Once we prescreen those candidates, making sure those that meet the minimum qualifications are organized, we then move those candidates forward either through a written examination, or in most cases, unless it's a, some of the bigger, more involved recruitments may require examination, some just require examination, I believe, like Police Dispatcher by law. And we then advance them to a panel interview, and that panel's in front of, we try to get three neutral people that usually outside of the city, so we can have a very objective and fair process of analyzing each and every single candidate to ensure that nobody is given any sort of bias, whether for them or against them, that we have a good, accurate reflection of who they are. They're, once we get the list, we then create an eligibility list organized by how that panel scores it. And we send over to the hiring authority, usually the department head, the application materials, and right now it's for the top three persons, we have some very strict rules here within the city. And we then send that over to the department head, the top three candidates, the department head can then make a selection, they interview all three and make a selection. And then they contact Human Resources about who they want to select, and then we at Human Resources manage the negotiation process and providing the conditional offer letter, and we get them through that hiring process. So that way, by the time that they're done, they can start on the ground running with their given department. So some of the challenges that we are facing in filling our vacancies is, one is the local labor market is really competitive. We have a lot of cities, and they're all, we're all competing for a lot of the same people. So that's created sort of a smaller, smaller pool of candidates. One of the things that we have found is getting candidates located from outside the local areas costs challenges. Some of the things that we hear from exit interviews as people leave who live outside a distance is just the traffic. It's becoming more and more congested, and battling that day in and day out becomes, it sort of diminishes the desire to, even though they may love the job, it just gets to them. Also, the public, the Pension Reform Act, or also known as PEPRA, it's sort of disincentivized employees to remain at any given employer. Some, previously under the old retirement plans, different cities were able to offer different retirement plans, and sometimes those plans, they kept people at particular cities. So for example, our classic plan is 2.7 at 55 for our miscellaneous, or for our police officers, 3% at 50. With the Pension Reform Act, police officers were 3% at 50, and 50 meaning the youngest age they can retire, to 2.7 at 57. That's 2.7% for every year of their employment. So it raised it up by seven years. For non-sworn, the rest of it, it was, 55 was the youngest for classic, now it's 62. Now, there's cost savings, there's all kinds of good reasons for this, but every agency now is, for PEPRA, for PEPRA non-sworn, every agency's 2% at 62. Whereas here, we had 2.7 at 55, the agency as with before had 3% at 60. So you see, there's like different formulas that can keep people. And so we found that PEPRA has sort of had this, it's great for cost saving, but it's not great for people really wanting to have loyalty, let's say, to a particular city because of the pension benefit. Also, that's coupled with our younger generations are not as likely as the older generation to demonstrate loyalty to a particular employer. There's more of a sense of moving around and finding what is that better position. And so that's caused a little difficulty. It's just a difference of opinion on what role our work plays in our lives. And so many of the older generations, it was commitment, get that gold watch, and now it's the younger generations is, who has something better, I'm going to move around. And then when evaluating skills, candidates' skillsets from the private sectors, the skills are not always comparable apples to apples. And so sometimes it's difficult to match up a private sector skillset with what our needs are. So retention efforts, we are doing continuous analysis of positions to ensure that our wages remain competitive and within the market median. Now, these requests are generated from a variety of methods. One is just HR reviews during the recruitment process to make sure we're competitive. Oftentimes, I'll have, some of our association board members will come to me and say, can you reevaluate these types of positions? Or sometimes it's the department heads, when they see that we're having an issue with recruiting, or maybe they're getting information as to why people are leaving. So we try to maintain a competitiveness, which is plus or minus 5% in the median market, which we have 12 comparative cities. Now, you can see in the last fiscal year, I've evaluated 42 of our city's positions to determine where they fell within the competitive market range. We're not looking to go too high, but in all cases, almost every case, our positions are slightly below market, and in some cases, as far as 11%, 10% in some cases. And so I'll work with the unions and work with the city manager, and then we'll come to council, and we'll sometimes make these adjustments throughout the year, just to make sure that we're trying to maintain some retention and competitive edge. Also, we've done some things, especially since Rob has been with us, where we're promoting a lot of positive workplace culture, kind of returning sort of this pre-COVID, where we have the ERC events, the employee recognition, the picnics. We're trying to do as many things as we can to promote a culture around here that demonstrates, you know, family of some sort. But those only go so far, of course, but they are retention efforts that we are currently focused on. Some of the policy changes- Some of the, some of the policy changes that we have been looking to implement is we have, I've been in discussion with the, the unions and trying to create a better way, a hiring process. The way, the one we have now is, it has a lot of procedural rules and sort of mires things down. So we're getting close to working out a pretty good, we, we all think might be a good solution. We also have been looking at the reevaluation of reliance upon contracted or temporary employees. There's substantially higher costs associated with them. Plus CalPERS is now on this rampage to make everybody an employee regardless if they're temporary or not. So we're very cautious of that. And then we created this training and development program. It's brand new to allow employees the opportunity to, to try out new jobs without it being a, a commitment, so to speak, where we're, they're getting paid anymore. It's the opportunity for them just to try it out. And if they like it, it gets them the experience so they can be competitive when that job opens up. And with that, it completes the presentation.
Thank you, John. Council, have any questions before I open it to the audience?
Yeah, so I guess in terms of vacancies, savings is the upside, but the downside is the service level drops. On these numbers that you gave us, are there any that raise the question, should we leave them that way to continue saving? Or is there a concern in any field that maybe we should try to fill, fill some of those positions?
Yeah, you noted through John's presentation, a number of them are on hold with the, trying to find that tough balance of finding some budgetary savings with, where, and having as minimal impact to the service as possible. But certainly there's still notice of having hiring for some of these positions, the majority of them. Because if we don't, if we say all those positions are frozen, 55 positions out of 333, we would have serious service impacts. So for the, the, the list of the vacancies and the hiring instruction, working with the department heads to find a balance in the short term of trying to keep things moving forward is presented in conjunction with the budget you have before you for next meeting for approval, which has a shrinking of the group, but not a complete sort of cut of immense amounts of positions or freeze of all positions, which would be a, a service conversation, which would be quite dramatic. Certainly council's preference, but at this point, the direction there, it matches what you see in your budget package.
Is there, my understanding is that through PEPRA, there's no, there's no cap? In other words, I, I don't know why anybody would want to work beyond what they have to. But my understanding is that there's no cap on percentage, but there's a cap on the dollar that they can get, dollar amount?
A cap in, in what?
So for example, at the post office, you, there's a cap of, you can't in retirement get more than 80% of your salary. So whatever percentage there is, you calculate how many years you work. And that's the maximum you can earn. So for example, when I started working, working at the post office, it was 80% and we earned 2% a year. So if you worked for 40 years, that was the maximum you can get at 80% of the, of your, of your salary.
So that's, it depends on the, it depends on the contracted formula with CalPERS. So our police classic can make no more than 90%. They get 3% at 50, but they can't earn more than 90%. With our PEPRA, for example, I'm going to take the PEPRA non-sworn, they're at 2% at 62. That 2% is for every service year when they retire, multiply the service year by 2%. So if they start work for us at 22 and they retire at 62, that's 40 years times 2%, 80% of what their final salary is over the previous three years. But there's a cap on that too. So I believe right now it's about 184,000. So anybody, if you make more than 184,000, you don't get any benefits. So if you're making, let's say, 250,000 and you have 40 years, you're making 40% of that 185 cap. So, so it, it depends on the formula, but yes, there are caps and there are limitations.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just also wanted to ask, because I think, you know, this law AB 2561 was also implemented just because a lot of cities out there were using vacancies as a way to balance budgets and really without being very transparent. I, I'm appreciative that we have this now because I, I know it's an additional thing we need to do, but it provides a little bit of insight that we need to provide to the residents to show, here are our vacancies, here are the, you know, the, the positions that they are and here are the services that could limit, be limited because of these positions. So yes, it is an additional procedure that we need to follow, but there's reasons for it. And I think that that's, what we're doing today is to highlight some of those reasons that we need to make sure that we're bringing this up. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time I'm going to open it to the audience. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on this item?
Something, Liz Ruiz Kaufman. Something I didn't see was a discussion about the, the impact of training as a tool for retention. I know that that was something that was part of, proposed as a possible budget cut. So I think that would help with that decision, whether or not to keep that budget cut. And, and also workplace toxicity. I, I mean, I heard the rumors that that was a thing. So I don't know if there's anything that's been done to, to kind of quell that kind of environment to, you know, make sure that, that it helps, because you know, that's a real thing. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back again. So my name is Brendan Williams, I'm the MEA president currently. I did want to talk about this and maybe John can speak to this. So at the time that that snapshot was taken, John, how many of those positions were probably MEA? 55, you said, at the time, but maybe 25 were MEA at the time?
Yeah, probably. I had a percentage of them, so I believe it would have been.
Yeah, so our percentage is 13.7, but MEA represents a, a large.
MEA has 159 members.
So we, yeah, so we represent a large percentage of members. So where it seems like we're the smallest percentage, we actually have the number, the largest number of employees affected. So I just wanted to let you guys know that if, if that percentage was throwing you off. So that, that increased workload that John talked about, when he talked about burnout, that is a real thing. And I'm pretty sure you guys, you guys all have had jobs and worked in different environments. Working and not having, we're supposed to be two people and you're, and you're the only person there. That, that affects people, especially over the long term. So that burnout is definitely taking effect. It then results in retention issues because people feel like the workload is too heavy. They might've come from a different municipality and they felt like, you know what? I was doing half the work I was doing over there, I need to go somewhere else, you know? And that's no fault of theirs, you know, it's just the conditions here that are, are being provided. It does, I know you guys know that for my association, we have a number of members that actually work in the field, right? So injury then becomes an issue for us because even though there are a number of injuries for people that work in the office like carpal tunnel and et cetera, the injuries or the chance of injury increases when people, with people that work in the field around heavy machinery, that are digging ditches, that are working around electricity, that are working around water lines. I know you, I know you remember in your, in your residency or around your residency, there was someone that was working on a water line that drowned and passed away. So these are, these are conditions that members are affected by all the time. So I just want to let you guys know that, you know, it does lead to increased injury. I've had in my department, in the water department, I've had two injuries in the last, you know, six months. You know what I mean? So it happens because there's an increased workload, there's less, there's less employees. So I just want to let you guys know. And I think there should be, this is a little off topic as, as, as far, but it kind of relates. There should be a real consideration to keeping the dedicated employees that you guys have, right? We talked about PEPRA members and PEPRA members aren't that dedicated because they need to go somewhere else. And I know my time is up, but I just want to express that to you guys. PEPRA members will go somewhere else. The classic members that you guys have have been taking care of the city for 20 to 30 years and they're important here. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Now closing the, you have coming, coming right up.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Ozada, Southgate resident. I guess my question is, as, as we know, the city staff are the most valuable assets of our, of our team here at the city. One of the things that I noticed, I was kind of alluded to a couple of times, is the, the freeze based off of the $8 million deficit that we're navigating or you guys are going to have to wrangle with. I think it is important to reference, although the report was very thorough, one of the things you touched on a few positions in regards to how long they've been vacant. I think touching on the vacancy for all the other positions actually would be beneficial for city council to kind of get an idea on. Given that it is a, this is a service oriented organization, it is important to make sure that that's taken into account when you're making some difficult decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam, closing the eyes, do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one. From Mr. Mario Dominguez, who are just the city council to contract out the city's current vacant positions to outside firms or agencies. He urged, urges the city count that Southgate's ongoing financial deficit makes it unsustainable to continue offering annual salary increases. He stated that contracting positions would lock in fixed costs and relieve the city from long-term financial obligations tied to traditional hiring. He called on the city council to change its approach and, and take action in the best financial interest of the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Rios, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Well, it's actually a law, so everybody's now doing this. And I guess it's, it has to do with the fact that there's a lot of vacancies throughout public agencies, right? I mean, that's the bottom and it's, it sounds like there's a labor pool shortage or there's just, like you said, you said they're just, especially for the cities here, it's, it's amazing that so much turnover, huh? People coming and going. And then injuries, you mentioned injuries. And so it is an issue in terms of, it is a human resources issue, right? And we're trying to find ways to increase the pipeline, right? I guess of employees and, and like for electricians, I'm thinking, do we do something with the electrical training center that's in Bell Gardens? Do we, because I suspect they have graduates that are coming right out of there with their certificate. And do we have a relationship with them as terms of recruiting from there? They're, they're right in the area. And, and I know we're starting to explore with the, some of the colleges, how we can begin to increase that pipeline. But I guess it's not just our problem, it seems like it's, it's across the board, right? With law enforcement, we know it, I mean, everybody's competing for the same bodies. The, the pool's gotten less, right, chief? I mean, so, so it, it, how, how, how can we change it? We know what, and, and the state's telling us, I guess, showcase this so that we could come with, with innovation, thinking out of the box, ways of addressing it, because it does impact employees morale. I mean, they're, they're overworked, I mean, and so share some perspective on that. I mean, what are we doing to, to really, I mean, are, are we thinking out of the box? Are we just, you know, going the same way about it? I mean, everybody else, I mean.
And I think Councilmember Rios brings up a really good point. And I know in speaking with some of our union reps and also speaking with the chief regarding how successful the Explorer Program has been for our Police Department, you know, I have, I've always asked and then speaking with some of the other union reps from all the other departments is, could we have an Explorer Program for, let's say, an electrician or a water department? Or, you know, we have kids that are home from school this summer. Could we do a summer program where we're trying to build that? And those are some of the conversations that we have been having and to try to figure out how we can instill some of this. Because we see the success that the Explorer Program has on bringing in new officers in our community. And those are the things, the, the conversations that, you know, we've been having with the unions and trying to figure out how we can bring a similar system to those other departments. And hopefully we can continue to have them and build on that and find solutions for those.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do appreciate the report, love the percentages, but I think it will be a much clearer picture if we actually see how many vacancies are in each department. Here you mentioned the unions. So my question is, have we reached out to the unions to maybe start an apprenticeship program? Similar to the Explorers? I mean, that's how we get a lot of our officers, but looking outside to fill some of these positions that are very difficult to fill because they're very technical. And again, most of them are vocational training fields. And unless you've been out in the field and you've gotten well-trained, part of the issue is how many years of experience are we asking of them? Going to use a prime example. Got out of high school, went to college, I needed to make money. So I went back to school and I did a paralegal career. A year later, graduated, nobody would hire. Because you don't have the experience. So you needed to go into a law firm as a receptionist to get your foot in the door. So what are we doing as a city to make sure we open those doors, to have them come on in, get the experience, but also attending school at the same time? So that once they're in here, we will make sure that they continue with the city. Because I know Southgate is a really phenomenal city, that we train our employees very well. To the point that when they do leave, they find other opportunities somewhere else and they realize, wow, I'm glad I was at Southgate, because now I know this and this and this and this. Just recently I ran into one of an employee that was at the Police Department. He's now in another city and he's like, wow, I didn't realize all of this other technology that is out there. That if you brought it into Southgate, Councilwoman, I know it would change the PD, but it's expensive. But I know that the technology is out there. In order to make all of those employees in there be much more efficient and not have to be taxed with a lot of the physical labor. So I am about looking at other options to make sure that we bring in new workforce, but also make sure that the workforce that is here continues to grow, continues to learn in their knowledge, in their fields, to how to better do what they're doing with the least amount of work, because I know that is possible. In any profession that you do day in and day out, you find loopholes to say, hey, I had to go from point A to point B. I could do it direct now or I could do it the back way, but I'm still going to get the work done and I'm not going to exert that much energy. So to me, it's, let's look at that so that we can bring more employees into the city. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilwoman, because Gateway Cities Co. and the leadership of Hector Delatorre, that we're working on a workforce and we've been having a couple of meetings. And we already had the meetings with the elected officials and also with the different businesses and colleges. So that's one of the programs that we are putting together and making sure that we include of those young folks that, I mean, they're not college bound, you know, they're, and we're looking for, you know, colleges and also cities that they can take those youngsters to an apprenticeship. So that's something that we are continuing working on, Gateway Cities Co. And I'm glad that you brought that up because I think this is a great program that I think all cities we should take advantage of and, and, and hopefully, you know, in the future that we can get. hopefully, you know, in the future, um, uh, that we can, uh, get those, uh, um, young folks to come and do apprenticeships in, uh, in our cities. I like the idea of, uh, um, like the Explorers. I think those are great programs and, uh, you've given the experience and then there you have new employees working for you, knowing your city already. One of the, um, one of, uh, the prob, not problems, but issues that I'm a little bit concerned, it's the, uh, the turnarounds on your dispatchers. Um, I know that some of your dispatchers have been leaving and we know how critical that, um, you know, they are for the police department. Uh, so that's something that we, uh, we need to look into to, uh, see how we can retain them, because, uh, uh, we start losing, you know, uh, grade of dispatchers. So, um, go ahead, Aunt.
No, I, I don't know if you're referring, because I know the Gateway Cities, uh, received, uh, are you talking about the grant, the Catalyst Grant?
Yeah.
I mean, and that, that's for, uh, Allied Health Logistics, Green Tech, IT, lower level city jobs.
Yes.
So entry-level jobs to cities. So I'm kind of excited about that opportunity, uh, aligns what we, we, you know.
What we're talking about.
Exactly. So we could definitely work with.
Yes, go ahead, John.
So just, just to quickly respond to some of those inquiries, yeah, um, as Councilmember Rios had mentioned, vacancies is a statewide issue. It's statewide with not just the police, but, but just statewide amongst all public agencies. And we have been taking some efforts to recruit within our local community with the assistance of Councilmember Rios. The city manager and I have met with staff from ELAC and then, and then just recently, we met with, um, I forget the name of the organization, was it the COG?
Gateway COG City Managers, uh, monthly meeting at the last meeting last week, actually. We met, we had ELAC, um, present about, uh, we were working on a pilot project at Southgate and then seeing if we can get other cities to join in. And they're talking about being able to customize entry-level courses that could tie to where our biggest needs are, and then leverage students that are interested, or say, don't even know what planning is, or don't know what, um, code enforcement or something like that. They get an intro class and then we see if we can take, say, there's 30 kids in the class, the local Gateway Cities put up their hand, maybe we can take two of them in Southgate, they can take two in Bell or wherever, and then they come and maybe it's a free internship, but, uh, we take them on and give them some on-the-ground work, work, we may get a little work out of them, but we also say, hey, this is a cool place to work, try to wet their whistle, get them some training and then see if they could be the next generation. And so that partnership with ELAC is in progress. Um, and we had actually talked about seeing if we could insert any of them as, say, intro police explorers. Uh, but the one dilemma is the chief and I talked about, and I think department heads would talk about as well, is, uh, when you've got a lot of vacancies on your regular staff, um, taking on a couple interns actually is less efficient because you're having to slow down, train someone, do extra steps maybe that you wouldn't be doing, talking through it. And so finding that balance of enough space to, to be able to educate an intern and still get the work done. So it's all in play, they're great ideas, um, it's not an easy path, but it's something we're sort of looking at. And I will piggyback on that, too. We've taken a big interest, um, in the last number of years, maybe it was here before I got here, but at least I've tried to continue it, is that internal growing and then promoting from within. And as you mentioned on those vacancies list that John listed, a vast number of those new positions are internal growth, where we have somebody who's maybe at a clerical level, they finished their degree, they're now, they have work experience and the education to move to that next level, or, uh, records person can get a chance to try out dispatch, learn that skill internally, grow to that and then slide internally. So that's definitely, we see that as the next generation being here and trying to work on that as well. So it is ongoing, your ideas are great, we can add them into the, the pile and, and try to work together to improve.
And, and if I can just add in, we do use the Long Beach Conservation Corps as a youth development training aspect, and we've hired a number, both hourly and full-time staff for us and for community development. And I know other departments have looked at their staffing too, because they have a full-born youth development program, which we get grant funding for. So we're, we've been using, like Darren uses, the police explorers and many of those aspects.
Madam Mayor, if I may. I, I had to turn around, uh, to see who was talking, because your voice is different. Go ahead, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
It got deep.
So the other thing I also want to bring out is cross-training, because the more skills you acquire, the more of an asset you are to the organization. So I would agree, you know, those that are in the police department, if there is an opportunity, you know, for training for dispatch, hey, why not? There might be an incentive there, because then they could move up within the organization.
And that's.
And not just in the PD, but in any of our other departments as well.
Right. And, and this past fiscal year, um, I developed this, this program along with the city manager that's called the Training and Development Agreement, which I sort of touched on a little bit in the presentation, and I've worked on it with, um, our associations as well. And what this, what this agreement is, is just exactly what you're talking about. If we have an employee that is interested, because oftentimes they feel siloed in a particular, like they get hired into street maintenance and they feel like they're stuck in there. But let's say one of them says, you know, I want to try out what it's like to be an electrician, then they can, within the department, work on this training and development agreement where they can go over for a day every other week and try it on and, and find out what it's like to be in that position, start getting that experience, you mentioned was so difficult to get. We have a young lady that's in Public Works right now, that's, that's trying to gain that experience so that she can move up in the organization. Or for folks that, that Darren has in his department that are interested in becoming dispatchers, it's a pretty tough position, that maybe you don't know what you're getting into till you step into that job. So it gives them an opportunity to try the job on, and if they, if they do find that it's something they like, we can get them that, that training and that experience that they can get into that position, so we could work them into being viable candidates. So we are growing that workforce. We are coupling that also with a hiring policy that we've been working on very closely with the unions to, to hire people quicker. That's one of the things, right now, we have a procedure that makes it so slow, to open up the opportunities for people that, that can be hired, so the hiring managers have the opportunity to look at more folks at one time. But internally, we're working on a, on a system so that we can recruit and hire and promote internal candidates at a much faster pace than what we have to do now. So we are taking some very good efforts and we talk with the unions all the time to make sure that we're getting their input. And, and we're trying to make these adjustments and we work really well together. I hope I'm not speaking for them, but I feel like we have a very good relationship to start building these methods to do exactly the, what you've been talking about. I think we have, we're just now trying this new training and development agreement on, but it seems to be working well so far.
Okay. Any other question, if not going to get a motion of to receive a?
I just wanted to say, Mayor, that, uh, I know that the community college is going to get workforce money, career tech education money, the governor did approve some money, and we're going to get some, so I know that. And then with the Catalyst Grant, with the Gateway Cities, I think that that's for like apprenticeship, I think that we can, that'll help incentivize these kind of, uh, opportunities.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you had a more question?
Second? No.
Oh, okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please, and that will be at AMB.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. And then we'll move on to item number two.
The city council will can, will discuss options during the workshop pertaining to the utility user stacks. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and, um, those here and, and watching from our YouTube channel. Before you, uh, we have a, uh, coming before you is a PowerPoint presentation where we want to go through, um, the realities of our current budget outlook, which, uh, was shown at our last meeting on Tuesday, and discuss the, sort of the process of our gap between our expenditures and our revenues, with, um, a discussion of what are some of the major drivers that have caused this gap? What, what's those big revenue, um, not so much the revenue, but the expenditure increases that have caused that? So we're going to go through that analysis. Uh, Louis, our administrative services director, will take the lead in a moment, uh, and start us off. Also, show us, uh, the revenue side, property tax, um, and sales tax, how much of the revenue that we get comes from those amounts, how much that someone might pay in our community actually, how much of that money actually comes to the city? Do some education there. And, uh, then talk about the, the gap, the, um, projections forward, and then we'll transition to what are some of the options to try to address those problems, um, talk about them on a broader scale, and then spend a little bit of time drilling into a concept called a utility users' tax, which, um, we'll talk through, uh, the components of that as an option and, uh, steps if that was to be looked at as an option. So that's coming up here, and if, uh, it works for everyone, we'll pass it over to Louis for the, to kick it off. Thank you, Louis.
All right. So, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's presentation is intended to provide an overview of Southgate's local revenue structure, specifically how property taxes, sales taxes, and other funding sources support our core services. This information, as Rob mentioned, will help frame the discussion on the cities as the city explores long-term options for fiscal sustainability. So I, I understand that the text on the right is very small, but, uh, for the purposes of this conversation, we won't really need to dig into a lot of the text there, but, uh, we want to get, so I want to get started with property taxes. So when a Southgate homeowner pays their property tax bill, only about 6.15 cents of every dollar comes back to the city. The rest goes primarily to LA County, school districts, and special districts like water and sanitation. This limited share restricts our ability to invest directly in local priorities such as streets, parks, and public safety. So if you look at this, uh, green portion here, this is our slice of the pie, when we're talking about, uh, property taxes. Now, to put this into perspective, uh, a, a real-life example is if your home is assessed at $100,000, and we know that that's very low, but just for illustrative purposes. The typical annual property tax bill, um, is about $1,250, and so it's about 1.25% of that. Southgate receives just, uh, like I said, 6.15%, or about, um, $76, uh, for every thousand dol, for every $100,000 of property, so about, um, $77 per year. The rest goes to the county, school districts, and other special agencies. When you break that down to a monthly amount, it's roughly $6, uh, a month that the residents pay for every $100,000 of home value. This money is used to pay for services like police, street repair, and park.
Can you hold on a second? Uh, we're going to, uh, Councilmember Rios, Ortado has a question.
I'm sorry. Because. And I'll try not to do it so much, but I think it's important that people understand when you're talking about the property taxes and you're talking about the amounts that we get, can you also just mention, um, who determines the, the property tax, so that the people listening, they will know where, where that decision comes from?
Well, i- it's state law, so if we go into, and I don't know if we have, actually, I'm going to skip, because I want to reference a table that's, actually, um, Councilmember, if we can, if I can answer that later on in the presentation, there's a table that kind of goes through that. But essentially, it, it's, it's a state cap on property tax. It's, it's, uh, it's a law that was passed that kind of froze the property tax in time. So the property tax that was in place when the law was passed is the, is the property tax that we're locked into. Some cities were fortunate enough, and we'll see later in a table, when, when the property tax was frozen, their, 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 uh, portion was really high, um, and ours is very low. Um, and then unfortunately, that impacts us forever. Um, but that, that is, that is by, uh, by law.
I think with Prop 13 back then?
Yes, exactly.
1973.
1973.
We were, we were around there in that time, the rest of you maybe not.
Uh, yes. Um, and we'll go over kind of, uh, the property tax breakout by, by neighboring cities and seeing how low ours is. And I have to remember to keep clicking, because there's fancy animations going on here. Um, so, so that's, that's, uh, an overview on property taxes. So on sales tax, it's a, it's a similar story. We get a tiny slice of this pie, except this, this one is a little bit bigger, because the city took some proactive measures that, uh, allowed them to secure a, 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 a local portion of sales tax. So if you look at this pie here, these two, these yellow and orange slices are both 1% each, uh, and, and this portion of the sales tax goes to, um, goes to the city. The rest of this is really for the state, this is a state kind of portion that everybody pays. The total combined here is 10.75%. You'll see all these light blue and this one gray, that's all county and metro, uh, they get the other slice. Now, we're lucky that, uh, the residents supported this, this tax measure here, Measure P, um, because otherwise, the county would have, would have secured that, uh, slice as well, and that would have been revenue going to the county instead of the city. Um, so sales tax is a major revenue source. The, the total sales tax rate, again, is 10.75, uh, we keep 2%. Uh, the other is distributed. Now, as, as an example, if you spend $100, uh, you're going to pay 10.75 in taxes, and two, $2 for every $100 purchase, uh, comes back to the city, uh, in some kind of, uh, sales tax revenue basis. The remaining, again, like I said, it goes to the state, the county. It supports things like homelessness, transportation, and other county-wide services. Um, so even when you shop local, most of the tax that you pay in Southgate leaves Southgate, and that's why the city relies heavily on the small share of sales tax revenue to fund essential services.
And before you move on on that, my understanding also is that the Southgate Measure P 1% is 100% here, but the Bradley Burns is not 100% here.
That's correct. There is some, some portion, 0.25% of this, uh, Bradley Burns, uh, portion goes, uh, back to the county. So, so even, e- even within this pie, there's a li, little sliver, but when you look at the total revenue, um, they're, they're really close. I mean, it's a couple hundred thousand, but they're really close. All right. So why does this matter? Why is this important? This matters because the city is responsible for funding essential community services like 911 response, we talked about dispatches earlier, park maintenance, street repair, youth programming, yet receives a very small portion of the taxes paid by residents and businesses. To bridge that gap, Southgate relies on grants and other restricted revenue, which can be unpredictable, can competitive, and often restricted to specific uses. For sustainable community-driven services, we need revenue that is flexible, reliable, and under local control. Together, property and sales taxes form the backbone of our general fund. Property taxes provide a stable and predictable revenue base, while sales taxes rise and fall with local economic activity. Visitors shopping in Southgate help boost this revenue, but again, only a small portion returns to the city. These two revenue sources enable us to prioritize and deliver on community expectations, yet their limitations create structural challenges. Now, let's take a look at personnel cost, which makes up the largest share of the city's general fund expenditures. Over the past five years, cost of living adjustments for employees have averaged 2.97% per year. During that same period, the general fund itself, in terms of revenues, has grown at an average annual rate of 4.37. This means that employee salary increases have been modest and consistently below the rate of overall general fund revenue growth. This approach reflects the city's strategy to balance fiscal responsibility with workforce stability, ensuring that we can continue delivering quality services while maintaining flexibility to invest in infrastructure and build reserves. We're going to dig a little bit deeper into some major cost drivers that I, I touched on briefly at the presentation last week.
Louis, if I could just interject one point before we get into this. So essentially, we have, everyone experiences cost of living, inflation, CPI, all those terms, uh, to goods and services. We showcased in that last slide, uh, labor cost being the number one cost in the city. There's, uh, understanding that, you know, what are those rates compared to this increases that happen in life? Um, and the council's been, you know, I think conservative to try to live within the means of the, uh, you know, that cost of living. the, you know, that cost of living, that revenue increase. But we have several very major expenditures that have not listened or paid attention to the cost of living or the inflation and decided to go off on their own in a very severe way. And beyond the council's oversight, they they're happening to us. So we want to highlight those to really zero in on what has caused this gap over the last number of years to get so large. Back to you, Lewis.
Thank you. So so as Rob mentioned, despite the fiscal discipline that we've had, we've seen upward pressure in key cost areas. Insurance premiums, utilities, technology, infrastructure, material costs have all increased significantly. We're going to touch on the major ones here. Overall growth in key costs. So the total cost for major cost drivers, so we've identified them here. We have unfunded liability, unfunded pension liability, our health insurance, workers' comp, general liability. Those two really were one line. I split them out, but I'll explain why in a minute. And the street lighting and landscape district. The total cost for major cost drivers increased from 11.9 million in fiscal year 2019, 2020 to 22.7 million in fiscal year 25, 26 proposed budget. This represents an overall increase of approximately 10.8 million or a 90% growth over a six-year period. Our biggest one is the unfunded pension liability, which grew from 6.1 million in fiscal year 2019, 20 to 10.3 million in fiscal year 25, 26. This is an increase of over 70% of about $4.2 million. Pension obligations are expected to continue rising due to the changes in CalPERS actuarial assumptions and some investment decisions that are outside of our control. Health insurance costs have also increased from 3.3 million in fiscal year 2019 to 5.5 million, a growth of 2.2 million or approximately 66% in a five-year period. Medical premium inflation and expanded employee participation are contributing factors. Liability insurance costs have more than doubled from 1.7 million in fiscal year 2019 to 5 million in fiscal year 25, 26, a $3.3 million increase or 190% increase. Industry-wide increases in insurance claims and the litigation risk have sharply driven premium costs upwards. And our HR director kind of touched on those last week. Looking at street lighting and landscape maintenance, our costs have grown by 952,000 from 627,000 in 2019 to about 1.58 million in the current proposed budget, largely tied to utility rate increases and infrastructure maintenance needs. These increases reflect external pressures such as insurance market volatility, pension mandates. Rather than discretionary spending, these are things that are mandated on us. We called we called this in the last presentation uncontrollable costs. The city has maintained service delivery despite these rising costs. So as I mentioned earlier in the personnel slide, and I'm going to go back to it because this is kind of important. If you look at our general fund revenue growth, the average is about 4% a year. And when you look at how much these costs have grown, essentially, there's there's been a structural deficit. And we'll talk a little bit about that in the next slides, really beginning in fiscal year 2019, that was just kind of hidden in plain sight.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just because he's on this slide, and I'm looking at the general liability insurance, because that is a huge jump. Can we just clarify what exactly is covered under the general liability insurance? So that we all get a clear understanding as to why the rates have skyrocketed. I'm sure Southgate is not the only city that's affected by these rates.
Sure. Last last week, I I had talked about why these rates were increasing. Now, general liability, that's going to cover our the lawsuits and the claims and that kind of stuff that comes in. The 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 issue is is that since 2019, insurance companies, we they they paid out a lot of money. They paid a lot of money because these companies are nationwide. So we've had massive hurricanes nationwide and all the money that takes to rebuild those, they're trying to recover. And here in California, we have massive wildfires. I mean, just this year, the two in Altadena and the Pacific Palisades have caused massive amounts of damage. All that has to be recovered. So the insurance companies are going to raise their premiums for that on those of us that are not impacted, but everybody gets raised premiums. There's also the the fact that we have in Los Angeles County in particular. As I mentioned, we've tried to shop around for better stuff, but we've had people say, we don't want to take you because Los Angeles County. Now, this is because statewide, California doesn't have tort cap claim, they don't have tort cap. So that means the sky's the limit on what you can get if you want to sue. And that scares insurance companies and makes it so that the premiums go up even higher. And then you have some divestment management protocols that some companies are doing. And there's some, there's some other issues. They're they're worried about a potential recession. So all these factors that come together, especially the the massive natural disasters, are just pushing these these premiums up. And I would anticipate that it's going to continue that trend, particularly with the way we're having wildfires in California.
Thank you.
You know, I I had this conversation with my daughter this morning because she said that her car insurance went up. She says, I haven't done anything, no tickets, no accidents, no nothing. And I said, you don't have to, as long as there's accidents in the southeast area, as long as there's car thefts in the southeast area, as long as there's. Somehow, the insurance companies have to recover those losses. That means that the rest of the people have to pay a little bit more, and that's what happens. And I use that kind of like an analogy of what this is as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
So can I ask a question related to, and you're saying that there's no limit? There's that they could just sue, raise the limits? I mean, is.
In reference to our unfunded liability? Yes. And and actually, I was going to elaborate a little bit more on that piece because I think this is a topic that's not very well understood by the public. But we're seeing it more and more, and we have seen in the last, I don't know, five years in in the news. So our unfunded pension liability is like a credit card. It's the amount we owe for the past service that hasn't been paid for yet. It's growing because of past underperformance and CalPERS assumptions. Those are things like investment losses, demographic shifts and lower discount rates that have added to that liability. Annual pensions costs are increasing even if staffing stays flat. And that's something folks need to understand. Even if we choose not to hire or we reduce our count, that pension cost will continue to go up. More of our budget is going towards paying off this pension mortgage. I'm going to call it a mortgage, because that's what it feels like every year. So we we I'm going to go a little bit deeper, just a tad on this. So again, the city's unfunded pension liability is the gap between what CalPERS projects we need in the pension fund to cover future retirement benefits for current and past employees and how much we actually have in the bank today, in the fund today. So again, think of it like a mortgage. We owe money over time for services already rendered. And each year, we make payments to slowly pay it down. And why has it ballooned? Why has it grown? Well, there's three main reasons for this. The first one is investment performance. So CalPERS did not meet its assumed investment return in several key years. For example, in 2008, in the Great Recession, in 25, 26, and again in 2022, which created this shortfall. And every time CalPERS doesn't meet its investment return goals, cities are impacted. Second is actuarial changes. This one is a little bit more accounting focused, but basically, CalPERS lowered its assumed rate of return, its discount rate from 7.5% to 7.0%, increasing the liability. I believe it may even lower now, but increasing the liability because of future investment earnings that are not projected to be lower. The second one is CalPERS policy. So CalPERS spreads payments of new losses over 20 years, but backloads them, meaning early payments are low. And then they grow each year, like a balloon mortgage, which we try to avoid. So even if we stop accruing new accruing new losses, payments will continue to go up. So even if the city doesn't increase staffing or pay, our costs will keep climbing again for three reasons. We talked about growing payments on past losses, similar to debt service or paying off a mortgage, increasing retirements and longevity and the CalPERS policies that I mentioned. Pension costs are growing, our growing share of our general fund. And and we look, and we're looking here, I mean, significant jump. In some departments, if I look at it by department, it's nearly 30 to 40% of salary cost. And it's all tied to pension contributions. It limits our ability to fund services, address compensation equity or invest in infrastructure without raising revenues or cutting elsewhere. So going backwards a little bit here, but we created these line graphs here to show. And and this light, street lighting and landscape fund, this has been, I think, a problem for longer than the five-year period we're looking at it. So if you look at this flat line, these were set in stone back when it was created. And I think there was a modification made at some point in time. But there was no structural CPI built into the 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 fee model or the the model here. So so it's late, it stayed flat. And as you know, nothing stays flat in terms of cost in our life. So it was only a matter of time before we kind of ended up in this situation. So essentially, this is going to continue to protect, to go up. These these years are the past five years. But if we look at the forecast that we developed for this, it's also going to go all the way up.
And and Madam Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add some clarity and and to the, especially to this fund, is that this was voted on over 30 years ago. So it has not been raised for over 30 years. And I think when it became a deficit was somewhere in 2012.
I don't know, have to go back and look.
Yeah. So I mean, it's it's been in our vision as, hey, this is a fund that is no longer sustaining itself. And what we want to make sure we do, especially the enterprise funds, I would call this like a special enterprise fund, right? A street and landscaping fund, is that whatever it costs to maintain what it's meant to maintain is covered by what we're collecting in the fees or in the taxes that we collect. And this is part of our property taxes. We'll see it in one of the lines. I think for my home, just in reviewing the last one, we, it's been $115, around $115 for, since I've owned a home. It's never gone up, it's never changed because it's based on your square square feet or the feet in front of your property. And so that doesn't change. But I think it's something that we need to take a look at and address. But it's some also, I want to make sure the residents are aware that it's something that was voted on 30 years ago. And we have not addressed it because we didn't, for a while, we were like, okay, we really don't need to. We're finding other revenue solutions to be able to do that. But it should have been addressed as soon as we were at a structural deficit individually.
And Vice Mayor, this is something that will require a vote of the people to change, as you know. One more note here is, if we're being frank, this number is actually understated. Art does a great job of finding alternate funding sources or street work and lighting work that would otherwise or should be burdened to this fund.
Real quick, can you be a little bit more specific in terms of, you know, it's a nice thing to show a picture, but dollar-wise, this year, what is projected? I don't know who's best to answer that.
So so, yeah. So if we look at the street lighting and landscape, for we're projecting the, for fiscal year 25, 26, this coming budget, an increase, oh, so actually, I made it flat. So I just projected flat, so this is actually going to be a little higher. But if we look at the historical, it's gone up typically by, and it ranges between, what, 11%? I have a table that breaks it up for me, one second.
Is it fair to say it's about 1 and 1/2, 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars a year?
The total, yes. But the the growth rate between year over year, it 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 fluctuates. I would say about 15% maybe more that that the cost will increase.
And I think it's it's important that we bring up what this fund actually covers. It's the maintenance of our of our trees in in the city or there are areas like.
Landscaping.
Enhanced, the landscaping, I'm sorry, not the trees, but the landscaping in our city, the 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 street lights. And if you can add to that, Arturo.
Yes, so this particular revenue funds all of our landscape and lighting systems. So street trees, landscape mediums, for example, we can fund with this, our traffic signals, our street lights and and what have you.
And even though there's a gap and we've not really addressed it, I know we've been talking about it for quite a few years now. The fact that you're able to find other sources of revenue, that's, those are sources of revenue that we can use for other things. And we use general fund money as well to cover some of this gap.
Yeah, that's right. And if, can you go back to that chart where it's kind of peaking up and down? So this chart here is a little bit, it's not easy to understand because you look at some expenditures where over $3 million, where in other cases, you're at 2.2 million. What's really happening, it's not that expenditures are going down, it's we're using other funding sources on that particular year to keep the impact to this, to these expenditures lower. So it gives the appearance that we're only at 2.2 million dollars at that lowest point, but it's really actually over $3 million on a regular basis in terms of expenditures.
I I just wanted that to be clear so that people understand that there's a gap there that needs to be addressed at some point. And we haven't done it because we find ways to deal with it without having to pass additional taxes to the residents. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. I wanted to revisit if we could. I think Councilmember Rios had a question about the caps. And I believe it may have been directed on the comment before about tort caps on the actual general insurance. John, would you be able to touch on the difference between, say, California and other states of how the lack of caps plays out compared to another state that may have caps? That is that correct to your question? Okay.
Yeah, so I haven't followed this law in quite some time, but my understanding is, for example, in the state of Nevada, they have a tort cap. And what a tort is, is is like if I do something wrong to you, you sue me for a slip and fall or or an accident, that for each claim, it was a million bucks. So it caps it off. You can't make more than $1 million. In California, it's whatever they can convince a jury that we should pay you for whatever wrong the other person did. So it's not uncommon that this is where you see the, you know, I don't remember what it was, but the McDonald's coffee cup in California that costs, you know, $50 million. In another state, that would be capped. If it's one claim, maybe it's a million bucks and that's it. So that unlimited amount of money that can be paid out on any claim is what is what makes a lot of insurance companies afraid. In fact, it's been probably 40, 50 years since we can get direct insurance for a city. We have to join these pool, insurance pools of other cities where we gather our money together and we can only get this excess coverage of insurance. And even at that, the number of companies coming into California willing to even provide even those umbrella level types of insurance is shrinking every, it's shrinking every year. So the rates go higher because there's not, the companies aren't competing a whole lot with each other. So I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. So the last slide I I want to touch on is the forecast. And this is really just to recap on a slide that was shown last week. But this is really to drive the point home. The city has operated with a structural deficit since at least fiscal year 2019, 20, with recurring expenses exceeding recurring revenues. While the financial impacts of this deficit were not fully visible in recent years, this is largely due to approximately 18 million in one-time ARPA funding that has been applied over four years. The ARPA funds were strategically used for eligible expenditures, such as public safety payroll and pandemic recovery programs for the public that otherwise would have been paid from the general fund. With ARPA going away, the underlying structural deficit is now fully exposed. And the general fund is projected to become insolvent by fiscal year 26, 27 without corrective action. Between fiscal year 21, 22 and fiscal year 24, 25, city used ARPA funds to backfill costs. These funds offset, like I said, approximately 18 million in cost, helping the city to avoid deeper cuts or service reductions during that time. The general fund appeared relatively stable, but this was the result of temporary relief, not structural balance. As these funds phase out, the. As these funds phase out, the true cost of ongoing operations is now reflected in the steep and growing annual deficits shown in the forecast. By fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, the city runs out of fund balance entirely. And by fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the general fund faces a cumulative negative balance of twenty-one point eight million dollars. Expenditures continue to rise each year, while revenues will grow modestly between two and four percent, which is a clear indication of structural imbalance. The city must now plan for long-term solutions rather than temporary fixes. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we use one-time money, including the use of budget stabilization reserves, to plug the hole this year. And even if we keep digging into reserves, again, those are one-time monies. That's going to leave the city vulnerable in the event of unexpected situations. If left unaddressed, the city will be unable to maintain reserves long-term, risking credit rating impacts and reduced ability to respond to emergencies. That concludes my presentation. I'll pass it over to Rob.
Okay. City manager?
Thank you, thank you, Louis. So moving forward on alternative options, I had referenced, windowed earlier, this concept of util users tax, which is an option, but I wanted to first go over sort of all the other stones that could be looked at, and they will be looked at. So I'll just run through those, there's more than this, but these are sort of some of the major ones that would come to mind. So on the revenue side, we talked about the fact that this landscape lighting district was set without an increase CPI, so it sat flat, all the costs have gone way up. So to fix that, we would go to the voters. So that would be a ballot measure, that the people would have to vote for that. If they voted for it, we would really refine what's the raw number that this is costing us without using, say, grant funds and other things to subsidize it. We'd get that number, we'd ask for that, and then also ask in that motion to have a CPI increase so that it keeps moving up. That certainly would be helpful, it's, take the voters to vote for it. Gap, if we, say, for the point of ease, just take it as a one point six million dollar deficit. If we could plug that, we would be moving towards solving our problem. And it could create a one point six million dollar assistance, which would be helpful. Unfortunately, we have, as was referenced, seven and a half million roughly gap number. So bumping that down to six million would be helpful, but certainly is a long way from solving the larger issue. Another item is looking at our fees, fines, permits, services, you know, how much should get charged to go to different, use different city services. We have had some cost increases, but we could do a full study and get those all adjusted for modern times. And certainly, we do have some fees that have strayed below the market, so we could increase those. I don't have an exact estimate, but it's certainly not a million dollars. It's, you know, I'm estimating a hundred or two hundred thousand, depending how that study would work out. So that's certainly something we can look at doing and are due to do, so that could be another option. And then we are doing a study right now on impact fees. So when you come to develop in the city of Southgate, you don't pay as many impact fees as some of our cities in Southern California. For instance, if you're putting in a new large business, do you pay traffic fees? Do you pay for, say, a complex park and loo fees? These are sort of a normal list, best practice fees. So certainly, we can, we're doing a study, we're looking at getting the best practice list of that, recommending that to council, see if you'd want to approve it. It sounds good in the sense that we would get these fees to offset some of the costs these new businesses bring in. However, the benefit, sort of the good part of an impact fee is it offsets some of the costs, but the drawback for our particular problem is they're typically reserved for specific use. So if you have like a large company that comes in and is going to have five hundred truck trips a day, and it's going to cause a lot of wear and tear on the roads, we would calculate using, we were getting those fees calculated right now by experts, and they'd say, well, those trucks within a certain radius around that property would create this much damage, divide that by the number of trips, you know, before they develop that property, they need to pay, whatever the number is, one thousand dollars per truck trip per day, that number, they pay half a million dollars upfront before they develop. That would be an example, I'm just throwing numbers out there, but a half million dollars the city receives in trade for the company coming in and us then needing to repair roads more regularly, and it takes a cost. The only thing is, that's not five hundred thousand dollars to help this deficit. That's money that gets put aside in a special account. It can only be used to repair the roads in that specific area. So there is, fees definitely, I think, are an area we should look into for development, but not necessarily, again, a good solution for our particular deficit problem in our general fund. Looking at revenue, so you always have two sides to the coin, revenue expenditure, so this is another revenue one. Certainly getting more economic development, so, you know, the more sales tax generation we can get in the city, the better. We have like a Walmart, that's, you know, as much as there may be detractors to the traffic or the type of shopping, it is a home run in revenue generation for sales tax. So that's a good thing, but we would need significantly many more Walmarts, which we wouldn't get any more Walmarts, but for instance, a Chick-fil-A or an In-N-Out Burger, which is just flooded with cars and traffic, and you think, you know, they're probably, I don't know how many millions they make. When you actually look at the sales tax revenue on an average In-N-Out Burger or Chick-fil-A, around ninety thousand dollars a year would be the revenue the city would receive. Again, sales tax, ten point seven five, city gets two percent, and by the time you get there. So, you know, if we have a, do the math in my head, you know, a hundred Chick-fil-A's, if we added those to the city, that could be nine million dollars, but I can't eat that much chicken, I don't know about you. But I'm just, sorry, a small joke in the sad stories here, but just trying to say that there are options, but there's a limit to how much land's available, how many businesses want to invest. We can do certain things to encourage more development, but we really can't make that a home run quickly. And also, some of these great developments that bring more money and also bring traffic or complaints or things to neighbors, and so there's a fine line to the benefit and the cost drawback. So it's certainly something we're working hard. Gabriel Perez, our new community development director, and I've been meeting with companies directly that are exciting to see if we can give them, you know, red carpet treatment and get them in here. But it'll take some time, and it'll be limited in its benefit for revenue. Then on the other side, the expenditure side. Certainly, you know, something many people from outside say, government would say, let's just contract out all sorts of services and we'll save all this money. I would say there was a time, I'm not old at all, of course, but there may have been a time earlier in my career, twenty years ago, where there was a bigger gap that could be exploited. The state government and our CalPERS system have created a lot of narrowing of that benefit. And without getting into too much detail, there used to be a time where, say, the market rate for a landscaper or even electrician or anything, and it still is true, the market rate is much lower often than the prevailing wage. But prevailing wage rules came into the state of California, and all cities by state law are required to pay prevailing wage. So somebody might say, oh, you know, we can get, instead of a city worker getting thirty dollars an hour for that service, I could just, I could bring a guy to my house and he can do it for twenty-three dollars an hour. But the prevailing wage is likely twenty-nine or thirty dollars an hour. The city can't bring in someone below prevailing wage. In addition, there used to be an added cost that, say, these, we talked about the pension costs. Classic pensions, the sort of older pension packages are more costly than the newer ones that are now, this Pepper has been referred to. People hired after two thousand and twelve, they get a lower benefit. And that lower benefit means the cost of, say, anybody hired now is less than these people before. So I remember doing an analysis before two thousand and twelve, and you would say, you know, okay, if they're not prevailing wage and the person in the position is a classic pension person, they've got a lot of costs, this person in the field's cheaper, maybe there's a good gap to take advantage of. As prevailing wage has gone up and the package of the benefits has gone down, it narrows that benefit. Doesn't mean we can't look at it, it doesn't mean there's still maybe opportunities, but it's really limited, those opportunities. And then you layer on top of that, as alluded to in John's presentation earlier, our CalPERS agency is very engaged in the last several years at looking at any violations of contracted staff that are doing the job that should be done by public staff. And they're narrowed the ability to do that. So you can get in trouble if you, say, took some of our city hall staff working in the same place and contracted those jobs out, but they're working right beside city staff, looking like city staff, doing similar jobs as city staff. We can have CalPERS deny that option. So it's, again, it's not saying it's not a possibility, but the benefits of that, you see cities doing less contracting out than they used to due to all these different factors. Doesn't mean, and it doesn't mean we won't look at it, but I just wanted to be clear that that path, again, is not as beneficial as it once was. Another expenditure, you know, we have our existing expenditures, an alternative can be to cut what they are. And so we presented at our last meeting, you know, we're talking about a seven and a half million dollar cut. I asked the departments to look at what would a four and a half million dollar cut look like. You know, if we have to go to the seven and a half level, we can do that. But just the four and a half, I can outline here, these are small tables, we don't have to go through everything. I took highlights of that list, but each department brought items to the table, and it's not fun. It's way past, you know, cutting the fat, and we get into a lot of bone here. This is not proposed for the coming budget year, but if we don't get some large help, this is where we'd have to go. So on this list, for examples, freezing the two, again, I apologize for the text, it's small, but freezing two crime scene forensic investigator positions, freezing five police officer sworn positions. Our special events are really loved, but they are extra costs. We didn't have time to get the actual costs in there, but there are costs involved where our limited staff, and if we have less police officers and we want them to come to the police event, they only have so many hours, and we have to prioritize safety and then events are second. Our parks and rec staff have to prioritize the everyday service at, say, the rec center or supporting the park. And putting extra hours in to support special events becomes hard. Our public work staff that do traffic control, cleanup, we have to prioritize the core services, and these extra ones start, we start running out of hours to do them. So this list is like National Night Out, Family Day in the Parks, station tours, etch catalytic converters, Halloween, Truck or Treat, Red Ribbon Week, not having the Azalea Festival. Just as a couple of examples, later in this list, we talk about getting rid of a payment that the city does to the chamber. Currently, it's fifty thousand dollars a year, that allows them to put on the Christmas parade, as well as several other events a year. If we're trying to look at the core services, even, you know, there's, these are severe cuts that we're talking about. There's going to be impacts in the community. So it's tough to talk about, but this is what we're looking at, we're looking at, we would have to reduce positions in our swim golf course, sports center, looking at reducing services, we have less staff. We'll have to, you know, a second season of baseball, a second season of basketball, a second season of AWI, so there's not going to be enough staff for that. I go on here, there's a lot of things here, looking at having to close the pool part of the season, looking at, looking at extra recruitment costs that we do to try to get more people, getting rid of a whole fund that we have for that, we talked about it early. What do we do to maintain a positive morale and appreciation and keep people wanting to be here? We have a fairly healthy fund to do all those things for our staff. We'd have to eliminate that fund, look at eliminating a lot of our training, leadership academies, dropping positions, much more than the freezing that we're talking about, there's numbers of positions here. Getting rid of memberships, professional memberships that help our staff stay engaged in the best practices in other regions. Again, I note the fifty thousand going to the chamber, which results in a loss of our Christmas parade, getting rid of the home requisition program, reducing training opportunities in multiple departments, freezing engineering positions in public works, doing some adjustments of staff where possible, but really shrinking the amount of people that go out and get grants, which end up saving us money, and then shrinking the amount of people that can do the projects that, to repair things. That back room may not look important, but they're really how we get the new parks, how we get the roads fixed. And then looking at positions at our yard, looking at eliminating Earth Day, Family Day at the park, and yeah, looking at reducing our IT support. So that's, all those are, not even all the cuts, to get to a seven and a half million dollar solution, that's four and a half million. So virtually, all these are proposed not for this fiscal year, as we've, the budget proposed to the community, for the council for next week, proposes a smaller version of cuts that wouldn't have, the current one that's in front of you for this coming week would have a million dollar reduction, not a four and a half. Within that, we're trying to freeze current positions, not have big impacts to the front of the community, but we are looking at proposing reducing some pool time, reducing golf course time, and perhaps reducing the Azalea Festival and eliminating it in order to start those cuts. That'll be before the council to make their decisions, but these are the tough decisions that are starting. This list here, as well as having to add to it, at this point is proposed that that would be a July first next year sort of preview of where we're headed, if we don't get a large revenue help. So it's important, I think, that the council's aware, Department Ed's put a lot of time into this. No one's had any fun during this process, but we're trying to be realistic, and we want to make sure the community's aware too that the size of the gap is something that's going to be serious if we have to get into the cut side. So with that, I'll pivot to what do other cities do? What do they have, what revenues do they have? Is there any, you know, difference? Why are we looking at this, maybe our neighbors aren't?
Rob, before you go on?
Oh, go ahead, sure.
Yeah, sorry. Councilmember Rios talked about Prop thirteen, that was back in nineteen seventy-eight, that passed.
Someone who's much older than me said it was seventy-three.
I thought it was seventy-three also, but I was looking into it and it said nineteen seventy. So whatever it was, both Ellen and I were here, the rest of you were not. But that was a vote of the people to control costs because increases were going up and up. And I understood the logic behind it, but it has significant impact to communities and how they get money. Same thing with Prop two eighteen, that one was a little bit, like two decades later. And that was a way to control cities from increasing, like the Streetlight and Landscaping Fund, the Sewer Fund and other funds. And I bring that up because people were asking, why do you even have to ask? If you're so short on the Streetlight and Landscaping Fund, why not just increase it? We're all property owners, we live here, and we should all contribute to it. As much as, you know, I appreciate the feeling of some of the residents, it still requires that two eighteen vote, and I just wanted to make sure that people understood why we can't just increase it and why we allow it to have that gap every single year.
Yeah, and I think Southgate is like many cities, but I think even maybe more cautious than some to try to really delay impacts to the community, to be sensitive to their limited resources. And, you know, it's tough for anybody to put out their hand and say, you know, I know you might have, you know, some concerns paying your bills, but the city needs some money to keep doing the services. That's hard to do, and so, you know, it's very normal for councils, and especially, I think, Southgate here, to really delay that conversation. And that's, in the short term, that's a great thing, in the long term, it does build more pressure to, you know, if there is a need to come, it may be a larger ask.
Yeah, I've been bringing this up quite a bit, but I know our council has always decided, let's just, you know, now is not the time. Every year, we say, now is not the time, now is not the time. And I go back to when I first started, back in two thousand and five, now was not the time. I can't think of a year since two thousand and five where now was the time, and it's always going to be that way. So the question becomes, do we continue to allow these deficits to go on? Or do we let the voters decide? And that's where we're at. Okay, thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. Appreciate the questions. Try to keep moving here, watch the cover, but appreciate the patience. So here is a list of, we've got populations. So we've got some surrounding cities, Belfour, Carson, Downey, Gardenia, Huntington Park, Lynwood, Montebello, Norwalk, Paramount, Pico Rivera and Whittier as examples. Populations in the neighborhood of ours, we're showing here, you can get conflicting numbers, 92,000 is the number that we had for this comparison. A list in the columns, what type of police services, either sheriff or local, fire service, how it works, library services. And then I think some of the meat is what is the sales tax rate in those communities? What is the property share rate? And oh, there's the magic green light. Louis is the lightsaber guy, which doesn't show on our YouTube, but he's doing it in the position here. The property shares, so as Louis mentioned, ours is 6.15. You'll notice on that list, unfortunately, we are not number one. We are not even anywhere on the list other than the bottom. We are the lowest property share tax of anyone in our region, which is a big handicap when we all have very similar services and we're trying to do the same thing. When you have less revenue, you're handicapped to start with. Next column over the utility users tax. So this is something you'll see all these comparable cities get millions of dollars in revenue except Montebello and Southgate, zero revenue there. So you compare us to say, someone might say, well, Downey. You look at Downey, 8.6 million dollars a year in addition to the fact that their weighted property share is almost 14%. And then people will say, well, look at Downey, you know, they're in better shape. Why aren't we Downey? Why don't we have things, you know, as put together as Downey? It's, it's hard again with maybe both hands tied behind your back when it comes to revenue. So you can see that list. You can see then we have some special assessments that some cities have. You'll see down in the Southgate column, that 2 million, 2.0 is the lighting landscape district. So we talked about that. Now that's very reserved. That's not for general fund. We can't use it to keep park programming going or making sure there's more special events. That's limited to tree trimming, landscape work, traffic signal work, but it is an extra revenue source which helps. You'll see other cities have a variety of different special assessments. We don't have the specifics listed there, but they're for different uses. Some cities have them, some cities don't. And then you look at a pension tax. So some cities have gone forward with something, a specific tax to help offset these pension costs that you heard Louis talk about, like the UAL where they went to the people and said, can we just get a tax to help offset that cost so we don't eat up the funds for other work? And you'll see Montebello, who doesn't have the utility users rate, has a 5.1 million dollar help on the pension side. So there is additional and you'll see down in our column, we don't have that. Then you look at other taxes. There's, it's, you know, the research finding these different lines, cities even have added some additional taxes on top of that. What we've done is tried to take all this information from the utility tax, the green area over. This isn't including the property tax, which would even show more loss on our end, but just that group and say, what's the total revenue in millions of dollars divided by the population to say, how much tax from the utility tax, special assessment, pension, other taxes, does each resident pay in each one of these communities? And if you look at that, you'll see a range of, on the low in the green section, Bellflower of $48 and change, a high in Huntington Park of $241 per person and a range all, but if you average all those out, you get an average of $122 per person for tax. Then you look at Southgate. You know, some people, I've heard rumors that we're the highest taxed city in the region. I think the numbers can tell a different story. So with that story, it makes it very difficult to see how we pay those bills that are the same as every other city. It creates a gap. You add on top of that, the property share being the lowest on the list, which isn't even factored in. We didn't have time for the purposes of this presentation to factor that in. We're, we're, we're in some trouble. So that creates a big slant against our revenues to try to pay our expenditures.
And again, out of that 6.15, how much do we get? We don't.
That, that is our percentage. So on a dollar, we would get six, or out of a thousand dollars, we get six, get my percentage out of a hundred dollars, I get $6.15. Thank you. Getting late with my math. So that is our, but say another city in Downey would get $14 where we would get six. So that, that's more than twice as much. So that really makes it difficult. That's sort of behind the scenes. It all feels like, hey, I'm paying 10.75 here, just like next door. I pay property tax, just like my neighbor, my brother at the other city. I'm paying all these, you know, fees on my property tax. Well, yeah, you're paying like a school bond, you're paying things that are going every which way, but how much comes to your local city to pay for local services? Not much in Southgate. So with that, let's take a quicker look. So at this one item that I think sticks out, utility users tax. So it's circled in a orange or red, I'm not sure, circle there. That is a major revenue piece that the city is sitting at zero on. It is something that cities surrounding us are taking advantage of. So let's take a little dive into that world. Let's understand what it is. So it's a local tax on things like electricity, gas, water, sewer and telecom, which could be cable, cell, landlines. And it's a percentage that people that live in other cities will see this percentage added to their bills. We have zero if you live in Southgate. Local voters have to approve it and it's collected monthly on the bills from the companies and they submit it to the city. So far, there's 163 agencies in California that have this tax, including the vast majority of around our area. If we're trying to look at our peers, this is very common. The revenue from that tax is 100% stays in the city and it is flexible to use for core services. It's not like that landscape lighting district one where it's like, oh, we got a million dollars from them. Let's, you know, put on more park programs or buy some technology for the police department as was mentioned, these needs that we have. A utility users tax is flexible to use whatever that is needed in general, not specific. So it has flexibility, which I think is an important component. So that's a breakdown. 158 cities, four counties, one special district is how many in California that have this. We looked at some of the cities in our area. We had a consultant give us some, some cities, which there is a bit of range in where they got them from, but they looked at say, a wide range of the utilities covered, the, you know, population size, the, maybe the demographics of the community to try to showcase something similar in some way to our city and looking at the population, the amount of revenue they generate in these surrounding cities. And you'll see the first four, Paramount, Downey, Lynwood and Compton are immediately neighbors. And then you see percentage tax rates that they've put on those bills. There is flexibility if it, say a city wanted to go out and put this to the voter, there's a percentage range that could be picked. So there's ranges that different, some cities, Compton picked 10%, Downey's 4.8. And then you'll see the next column, second to the right, final right side, what percentage of their general fund comes from this? So for instance, Downey, 9% of their general fund to pay all their bills is coming from UT, 0% is coming to Southgate. So if we look at a, a picture that says, boy, we're about 9% short in our revenue, we have a 9% hole, wonder how we'd fill that? Well, we know how Downey fills it. If they didn't have this, they'd, I think, be having this same conversation that we're having. You can see the per capita ratio of how that breaks out per person, when they try to take the total cost per person. We'll look into a little more detail of how that might play out. So then you look at what rates are picked in different communities. This is taking all those jurisdictions and the blue is, do you choose 1%, 2%, 3, 5.5, all the way up to 10? And then what's the percentage of all the jurisdictions that have picked 10? 6% have picked that. Say 6%, 12% have picked that, 4%, 9%. So there's flexibility in what percentage you can pick. Of course, the less you, you know, say if I'm a taxpayer, I'm like, let's pick 1%. And, you know, the city might say, let's pick 10. Trying to figure out where that could be best fit. At some point, I think matching the ask to the hole kind of leads you to what percentage might be recommended. In looking at that, we did, these are ballpark figures. We would need more time to analyze, but in the event that we looked at our major utility revenue that occurs in the city, and there's pieces missing here like say cellphone, telecom, cable, we have charter, we don't have all the cable companies, but this is fairly difficult information to grab, but we have the annual, I don't know if you have the green, the gross receipts. So roughly all the, the total bills that are paid for, for instance, SoCal gas in the city, Edison for electricity, city water. And then we have calculated a percentage for utility revenue based on a percentage. So if we charge 5%, roughly what would the city generate? In this example, roughly 6.6 million. If it was 6%, roughly 8 million. If it was 7% and so forth, up to 10%, which would be 13 million. So it's trying to get a concept of how much of that hole could say a solution like this fill? Well, depending on the percent, fill it completely, it could fill it plus room for say other things, maybe future costs. Or there are cities that might leverage something like this and create some space, maybe even extra revenue. And then you could, you can do sort of a bond on a portion of the revenue, like a million dollars and say, do a bunch of street repair or streetlight repair or something. There's, so there's concepts in there that you can use a calculation to decide what would you want to ask for based on what might you be able to offer in trade for the funds coming in? So that's getting complicated. I'll try to keep moving, but that's just some estimates. And then using some of those estimates, again, we, this is really quick, we had an employee actually who shared her bills and we just looked at her bill as an example. So don't take this home that this is everyone's bill. You could actually probably look at your own bill and do your own calculation of 5%, 6%, 7, 8, whatever. But just using that example, Southgate bill, you know, how much per month? You know, if you have medium use of all your utilities, 39 bucks. If it's low, 26. If it's high, 52 for say 7%. And then of course it goes higher if you go higher percentage or lower. Again, this is really just a sample. We would need to do more work on this and also, you know, ask any resident to do your own. If you say don't have cable, well, that, it wouldn't be on there. If you barely use any water, then it's lower. If you use a ton of water, it's higher. If it's electricity rates, all that. If you have solar, you probably pay less electricity. Also do know that these costs would be calculated on your net charge. So we do have a question sometimes that comes up and say, well, what about low income people? They're struggling adding this cost. Well, actually, if you get a reduced rate for electricity or gas, the percentage would be on that reduced rate. So it actually, there is in a sense, a built in subsidy that could help a low income person because of that lower utility rate. Then we looked at annual. Again, these are just ballpark figures. Please don't hold us to that, but you know, it could be as high, say, I'll just pick 7% again, high of 630, a low 312 or maybe in the middle of 470 for a year. So that's an estimate again of what the total aggregate of all this tax might add up to as a contribution to help the city retain those services we talked about. If this, again, this, and maybe I didn't mention that this, any ideas of utility users tax requires a vote of the people. So this is not something the council can do on their own. And obviously it would be a big ask and it shouldn't, it shouldn't be done by anyone but the people. That, that totally makes sense. So that it would require to be put on a ballot. So if there was a decision to move forward, it would require what election to pick? It has, you know, there's a different times a year. So there's like, there isn't an actual election set for say this November, but that time could be used, but you have to do a standalone election, which has actually a very high cost, that the city would have to incur, incur in order to put it on the ballot. We actually just found out that this afternoon, the county election gives us the estimate and it's over a million dollars. So that was much higher than earlier estimates. So that's certainly, it's much different to do it, say June next year as an example. There's already an election set for governor and primary for, for different folks. So that cost is money is in the, I think we have an estimate 275,000. Still expensive, but we're talking like a sixth of the cost. And then there could be say next November, there's already an election that the city has for council members. It could be part of that. We don't have that number estimate. There'll be some extra costs. We're not sure it'd be, you know, probably no more than 275, but some amount, we're not sure. We can look into that. But that choosing, if you want to do it, what election to pick would be step one. If it's this November or this coming June, the step before you can ask to put on the ballot is you have to declare a fiscal emergency. And actually the city did this in 2008 when they were looking, they sort of had a fiscal cliff to fix, figure out, and they decided to go with a 1% sales tax. So I, we have members on the, either living in the community or on the council at the time when that same decision has, which actually gives us some really good sort of lessons and wisdom of how did that work? And it was a declaration of a fiscal emergency followed by putting that measure on the ballot, followed by the community deciding to vote for it, creating more revenue for the city. So that would be step one. That vote needs to be a 5-0. If you do this kind of work on a, say next November, when there's already a council on the election, you don't need to declare that fiscal emergency. So it's just a little quirk in how this works. You have to then decide how is this UUT going to be structured? There's a ballot language, so you have to word that properly. You have to decide, is it all utilities, some utilities? Are there any exclusions? When we looked at surrounding communities, a common exclusion that was pretty well united was low income seniors could be excluded. So, you know, typically 65 or over, they present some income information and then they could be excluded from paying that. And then the rest, typically in other cities, everyone else pays, but I did mention that quirk of say a person getting a lower rate, it would be calculated off that rate if they were at a lower income utility rate. So that gets figured out. You have to determine that ballot language that gets presented at a council meeting. Council proposes to vote. They would have to, council would have to vote to put it on the ballot. But the key component there is council doesn't vote to put on the tax. They just send it to the voter, voter decides. And then the community can give direction of which way they want to go. The city's job would be only education, not advocacy. So we, I mean, we're educating right now, I think of how all this works, but we would, if the council wanted to move forward in that, we would spend a lot of time educating workshops, team, you know, neighborhood meetings, whatever's needed. This is big decisions, you know, we're an open book, we're transparent. What are our costs? What are expenditures? What else could we do? We, we do all that and we didn't form. And I think that's the end of this slide. And then with that, so the next steps could be, you know, a red zone to declare a fiscal emergency if there is a desire to do that right away, ask for it to be put on a ballot. It would have to go right away if it was for November. I think us finding out today, the cost of that, I don't know if that's a recommendation. So really the, the recommendation goes back to these type of things. If it was something to be looked at, when might it go on? You know, if it's one of those dates that needs a fiscal emergency, would that be declared? And then how would it be structured? This is really just step one on this conversation. Gave you a lot of information and the committee, a lot of information, some of the reality behind how our budget has been structured, the structural deficit we've fought through for many years, the fact that it's getting to a point where we're going to have to do something. Gave an outline of some different ideas of how we could address it, some of the limitations of, that we have as a city, just based on how our revenues work compared to our neighbors, the concept of a UUT and then the steps if that was to be pursued. That summarizes, I think, everything we had to present tonight. So I'll pass it back to council.
Thank you, city manager.
Madam mayor, if I, if I may?
Oh, let's say councilwoman, I know you wanted. Thank you. Could you enlighten us as to what's the cost that we were notified today of how much it would cost to put the UUT on the ballot this November?
Yes, 1.2 million.
1.2 million to ask the question.
Yeah. And then in June, 275,000 as a comparison.
Okay. Madam mayor, if I may, just because I'm sitting here.
Go right ahead.
Things are just going through my head right now. In closed session, council member made an allegation against me indicating that I had spoken ill will. So I So I took the liberty to email compatriot to get a clarification of which they have responded to me. I simply can't just sit here and allow a council member to lie about an allegation. So what I am saying is that I'm going to get to the bottom of it to find out what allegations he's claiming that I have spoken ill will of him at his center, because that's not acceptable. So I will be getting to the bottom of it. Thank you.
Okay, back to.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to, you know, I, I did kind of a similar thing, going through my own home bills, trying to use the percentages. And even at the high end, at 10%, I was averaging around $60 to $65 a month on taxes. So it, it was pretty close to what it, it was looking on that. So I, I was happy we had that because I had a lot of residents asking me, you know, okay, you want to raise it to this percent, this percent, but what is it? What's the bottom line? What is it going to cost a resident to be able to, to, to put that in there? So I think it's good that we did that. I was kind of giving them my example of my home bills and just saying, but you know, I, I have cable, I have cell phones, I have a lot of things. And if we decide to charge on everything, this is what it would come out to be. So it was important for us to have that. And one of the things that I did want to highlight was, you know, a lot of people were saying, and even in the last council meeting, we're bringing up, you know, you know, why is Downey this and why is Downey that, right? And I, and I wanted to kind of always tell them, and I think I want to say it again, is they had it since the, the utility users' taxes since actually 1990, but they've updated it in 2012. So if I just use the 2012, that's a 13-year head start to us, where they've generated, if I average around seven to eight million dollars, anywhere between 100 to 105 million dollar head start on us, that they've been able to accumulate on that and be able to, to have that. So I, I want to make sure that we, we, we paint that picture. But at the, at, the utility users' tax in my vision is only one piece of what we need to do. And I think you highlighted a, a lot of the things that we can do. And I think that those are all items that we're going to need to address. It's not going to be this one thing going to be the solution to all the issues. We're going to have to look at what cuts we make. We're going to have to look at, you know, how do we adjust the landscaping fund? We're going to have to look at, you know, are we, you know, charging the right fees for the services that we're doing? Like, I want to make sure that we're not just relying on this one tool that we are actually looking at the alternative options instead of UUT and saying, we need to implement these as well. We have to find, you know, are, are we, are we being, finding economic development that is going to bring revenue? Are we asking the questions regarding impact fees? Are, are we making those decisions? And also understanding that when we're increasing the fees and fines, those fees and fines also go to the resident. They're also going to, to the resident to, to make that adjustment. These are, you know, if a resident wants to do an improvement of their home, what it, the permits cost today, maybe not what they cost tomorrow. We're going to have to adjust that to identify that. And I think we're going to have to look for areas where we are charging at a very low rate and we need to adjust to that, to be able to be competitive with the resident, the, the areas around us. So I want to make sure that it's not just, here's one tool that we're going to rely on, that we actually do a, a comprehensive review of all these alternative options as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. And just on that note, on the, the fees increase, when was the last time we did a increase on fees? Because I know it's been a while already.
Mayor, I think it's been about four years or 2021 since the last time we did a CPI increase. However, for this, as part of our strategy for this fiscal year's upcoming budget, we do plan on bringing a master fee and charges schedule update with the current CPI increase to you in July.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, fellow?
Yeah, council member, Vice Mayor Barron brought out the one city that had a, the utility users' rate sometime like 13 years ago. And I had looked at some of the surrounding cities. Downey had theirs in 2010. Linwood had theirs in 2008 and HP had theirs since 1989. And most of the cities around us have had it for well over 10 years. So all the cities around us took the steps to address those shortages many, many years ago. So again, when you talk about the millions of dollars that each year can be generated, that's how much of a head start they've had over what we're even thinking of bringing to the voters to consider. And again, when you add it up, that's a lot of money throughout the years. And that's not even talking about the streetlight and landscaping fund and a couple of other items that are well overdue. And again, every year we say the same thing, now is not the time, now is not the time. But there's a moment where we have to start looking at this and saying, you know what? Then when is the time? Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Rios, do you have anything else before I open it to the audience?
Just briefly, Mayor, I like the idea of a scenario bill, just to kind of get an idea so the people know different scenarios depending on, on your cost of, of bills. I think that's important that we do some scenarios so that kind of, and I'll, I'll even use my bills. So you can use that. But, but so, you know, I, I think this is important to be educated on this so we understand this more thoroughly. So this is a great presentation. It's very thorough, very, it's, so I'm sure there's a lot more in the weeds to get into. But at the same time, I'm thinking that we have to be very strategic in terms of, because if we're talking about, we're off already talking about putting it off in the November, not this November, down June or no other November, that's a year and a half away. And then even if, if it does get on, it's going to be another year and a half before anything even comes in. So, you know, if the voters decide to even pass it. So, so we really have to be mindful that it's going to be a while before even this revenue comes in. If, if, if the voters decide that that's the course direction. So I, yeah, so, and again, then we have to be very strategic in terms of cuts and the minimal impact on the community and, and of course, our employees too. But so, yeah, so it's, it's tough moving forward. But yeah, I thought it was a good report.
And I'll just add, I think, great points, Councilman Rios. And just on the timing, I think we're all learning on this. So on the revenue expectation, because this is new to me as well, our consultant had just mentioned it's probably four to six months from the time of approval to when you, you start getting those payments. So to your point, it's not immediate. And if, say, a vote was to take place in June, it might be January till the revenue starts being seen of next year or if it's a year and a half from now. So you add six months to whenever that election is before you, to, to, to your point of the delay of the revenue.
City Manager.
No, no, I was going to open it to the audience, but you are done.
So my question would be, given the fact that several of the cities have different taxing on different utilities, would we do the three, the four, the five or the six?
So the calculation was, the, the estimate that you had, sorry, the estimate that you had was looking roughly at, see if I can put it back here, on, where'd it go? Oh, did I go too far? Yes, I did. There we, there. So this one had not all, but some of the, say, cable cost, charter, there's others, spectrum and things, the water and then the gas and the electric. This does not have, say, sewer. Some cities also do the S on that one comparison chart and some do it on, you actually do it on, add it to wireless prepaid minutes, which is another item. And then, so there are other things at this point. I was looking more at sort of an average list that other cities had done, which was these items. But we could, it could be expanded or contracted. If anything gets pulled off the list, the number goes down. If more things get added, it goes up. But the, these are sort of the main revenue generators, adding, say, the prepaid minute item, which I'm still getting more information on, wouldn't be a large difference. But that was the proposal just at this very draft.
On this, on the sewer, aren't we already getting charged with the county sanitation?
Yes, there is a district charge, but it's not a utility users' tax. But then all those would be open for discussion.
How about the commercial tax? And how, how does it work with the, the, the businesses? Does this work the same as the residents or, you know?
So this is any rate payer on their bill would pay. If it's the renter, it'd be on that bill. Or if it's the landowner, it'd be on their bill. Whoever's paying that bill would pay the extra percentage.
Everybody.
Yeah, everybody. But say, if you're, you have a rent that includes the utilities, then the landlord would be paying. But if you're paying it directly, it's you. Everybody would pay it. It's just depends on your relationship to.
So renters, how does that work with rent, homeowners, renters?
Well, it depends. Like some renters pay a flat rate and the landlord pays the bill. Some pay rent plus the bills. So if they did that, the percentage goes to whoever's paying the bill.
Question. Is the community going to have an opportunity to decide which of these they want to tax themselves on? I know they're going to have to vote for, if this goes in November. Are we choosing them or are we going to allow the community to decide which ones to tax? I mean, they are the ones that are going to be paying for it if they choose to pass it.
I can look into that more. Basically, how it works is a ballot measure picks the percentage, picks the excluded members. For instance, say, low income seniors or not, or whatever. That, that all gets prepicked to put in the ballot language, including what utilities are charged. So that gets pre-selected by whoever's building the ballot language for a ballot item. There isn't a mechanism where you sort of have multiple choice. I guess someone could propose, I've, I've never heard this happening, multiple ballot measures with different versions. We can do a little more research on that, but that's not typical.
Well, for me, given the fact we already paid $115,000 to a consulting firm to do a survey that we'd never completed because obviously the community wasn't there in wanting to do a UUT, couldn't we do a survey to ask them what they would be willing and what areas they would want to be taxed on?
Certainly, yeah, a survey can be done for any purpose. I guess the question would, you know, some, we could look at how those questions are phrased. For instance, you know, if I, if maybe I wasn't at a session like this or, you know, I, I don't know, say, the gap is $8 million. And then if someone asked me, what would you like to pay? I'll say zero or 1% on only my cable bill. And then that, you know, I would vote for that. And then it's like, well, that gives us $7, but we need 8 million. So there's a piece there that typically the city has to kind of make a call. That we could, there could be workshops, get dialogue, but what number are we trying to, revenue number are we trying to achieve? And then if, if there's every group and every utility gets dropped off, the number becomes half of what you need, then there, there's some mechanism there. So typically, cities will do workshops, get educated, have dialogue. But in the end, say, a council will make the final call on the language and then the community will decide if they want to go there.
So my issue is obviously our seniors, but then we also have a lot of families that are moderate to low income, that are barely making it and can't afford the luxuries of internet. And we saw that during the pandemic. You know, our kids were home, their internet kept dropping. I know because I was trying to teach during COVID and it was really hard. So to me, it would only make sense that we would exclude the seniors as well as, you know, the moderate to low income families that are barely making it. But again, that's a decision that we will get to when we get to it. And it's going to be up to the community to make that choice, to make that decision, if you're willing to tax yourselves or not.
Well, I think this is where it comes in, the education. And we definitely need to be very, very formal with them, that what is it that we need? Because we need a certain percentage in order to move the, the city forward. And with the education, with just bringing everything to, to the community. I mean, and for them to also suggest, I mean, that would be something that we could, that we could do.
Madam Mayor and members of council, tonight is really just an educational part of it. And so the, the, the questions, we're not at the point where there's any action that's being taken tonight, nor is action requested. There's no motion that's going to be made here other than a receive and file. And so tonight is really just a educational overview for the benefit and we should keep it at that level.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And we're going to go to the vice mayor and then I'm going to open it to the audience.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted, I think Councilwoman Alvalos does make a good point of trying to get the community input involved. And I think when we do these workshops, one of the things that we could probably implement is like an exit survey, you know, for the people who are actually at the workshops, because I think that would be a little bit beneficial to just hear, you know, their thoughts as they're leaving those, those workshops. Because if we're going to extend it to a June or a November time, it gives us really a good amount of time to start working out how we're going to educate the public on what this would be and ask them like, you know, how do you feel about, you know, X, Y, Z? Or how do you feel about this? And then we can kind of really have the, the information so we can build that measure.
And, and I'll echo that. I know the mayor wants to go out here. If I could have one, one slight response, I think that's excellent. And I think too, some of those balances can be discussed because as much, an example of, well, if a low income, say, also doesn't have cable, cable or internet, well, then they don't have a bill to pay. So there, there is no charge. But, yeah, say they're like, the contribution is tough. But on the flip side, sometimes it's our low income groups that may take more advantage of special events that don't have a charge or our deals that we have at our rec center and our services where for, you know, a very small fee or discounted sports programs. And then, you know, with, if we don't get enough revenue here, those could be pulled away. So it's trying to find that balance of, you know, at some point, services do have to be paid for, even if sometimes it's more than we want. But where do you find that? I think that dialogue at workshops would be a great way to educate, talk about it and kind of find a way.
Right. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and have the city clerk read, read a letter from our city treasurer that he left.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then I'm going to open it to the audience.
Thank you. The letter states, as some of you may be aware, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting in person. I notified the city manager brought to me six months ago and have continued to provide reminders over the past several months that I would be unavailable this week. While I appreciate the, the scheduled budget meetings were set for weeks, I would be in town. Last minute special meeting was scheduled with full knowledge of my available, unavailability. Tonight's workshop marks the beginning of what could become a significant change in how the city of Southgate funds its services. As you consider the potential introduction of a utility users' tax, I urge the city council to approach this topic with transparency, accountability and the commitment to truly engage the public. By nature, I personally believe that we were, we are overtaxed at the federal and state level and I'm generally opposed to a creation of new taxes. That said, I understand the financial deficit the city is facing and the difficult choices ahead. For the, for that reason, I am open to carrying the full proposal, understanding the rationale behind it. Ultimately, regardless of how I might vote on the UUT, if it appears on the ballot, it is up to the voters in our community to decide the decision such as a measure should take. A utility users' tax is a regressive tax that impacts all residents equally, regardless of the income and would directly affect essential monthly utility bills, bills, I'm sorry. In a community like ours, where many families are already dealing with rising costs such as tax, must be carefully considered. I respectfully ask that before any formal proposal is developed or placed before the voters. The city council ensures the following. One, full transparency. Provide the public with a clear explanation of why the UUT is being considered, how much revenue it would generate and what services it would find. I'm sorry, fund. Number two, community outreach. Host multi, multilingual town halls, mail information flyers and ensure residents, specifically seniors and low income households, understand the impact. Three, explain the alternative options, including spending reductions and reallocations before imposing additional burdens on the public. And four, equity protections. If such taxes, consider exemptions on tiered structures to protect vulnerable populations from being disproportionate burden. This is critical, a critical decision with long-term implications. I strongly encourage council to listen carefully, remain transparent, ensure that the public is informed and empowered to make the ultimate decision. Thank you for your time and. Thank you for your time and public service. Respectfully submitted, Jose De La Paz. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Yes, no? Oh, yes, okay.
Is it on?
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Council, Nelson MLCO 10135 Dorothy. Um, regarding this tax, Mr. De La Paz is exactly, uh, correct. I mean, we're overtax federally, state, local. We have a president that has this big, beautiful bill that's going to take us into the ground. A governor that's fighting that president. The state's facing a deficit, the county's facing a deficit, the city's facing a deficit. Um, my concern is if this, this utility tax has to pass in order, in order for us to get out of this hole. But whatever the percentage is, the county's probably going to tack on another tax. The state's probably going to tack on another tax to get out of their whole federal government themselves. I agree with Mr. Maron, Vice Mayor, um, that we not only need to find the sweet spot on the percentage of this tax, but also look into our expenditures with the city, um, and see where we could trim the fat here. What I do notice in my dealings with the city is that there's inefficiencies. Um, they're driving down the street, walking down the neighborhood, there's a lot of parking issues. We could gen, generate revenue with parking enforcement. Um, a lot of vehicles that haven't paid registration, tow them. Everybody here has to pay eight, nine hundred dollars in registration. We should force them to do the same. Uh, community development, um, there's an efficiency in, in the permits. Train, train the employees, train other, cross train the employees. If housing is slow, help building and safety, you know, that's where we generate our revenue. As I spoken before, there's a lot of unpermitted structures in the city. And it's, it's not by lack of trying, it's because of the headache it does to come in and, and pay the fees, pay the permit. So if we start correcting some of these inefficiencies with the city, it helps with the revenue of the city and, and, and try and take control of this problem that we're getting into. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Councilmember, City Staff. Um, I have a proposed date for the election.
Can we have your name?
Yes, Edgar Pelayo, longtime resident of Southgate. I think that date should be in, uh, November of twenty one, twenty five. I think it'll give us plenty of time to think this through and, uh, you know, make sure we get it right. So, um, I, I think that, uh, um, you know, as many of the, uh, the letter from the city treasurer and, uh, previous speaker, we're definitely overtaxed. And you're asking us to basically ask ourselves how much more we want to tax ourselves, right? Uh, I oppose this tax. I think that, uh, you know, uh, um, the city is a hundred years, a hundred plus years old. Uh, growing up in the city, I remember having many of the services and we haven't had that utility tax throughout all that time. So the city somehow did it, right? And so I think that, uh, definitely there's a, a lot of ways to do that. I'd like to sort of recap the, uh, meeting from March eleventh, where we discussed, uh, uh, hiring this, uh, um, consulting firm, right? I know that there were a lot of things said, money mismanagement. Um, there was a comment made by, uh, uh, Councilmember Hurtado about that, uh, said that, uh, you know, he was confident in staff, that, uh, because staff was doing all they can. Um, and as the previous, uh, speaker said, there's a lot of inefficiencies that I think can be addressed. I know that, uh, um, some of you knew what the situation was, what the deficit looked like, whether it was one number or another number. I think that Mayor Davila accepted some of that responsibility and said that, uh, you know, there were definitely things that had to be done and, um, you know, we would have to tighten our belt and make some cuts. And so I think that that's probably where, uh, we need to focus on. Um, Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Avalos mentioned that, um, you know, she was in favor of balancing the budget, but not on the residents' backs. And, and so, you know, I think that that should definitely stand out here. Uh, I feel that, uh, you know, there's a lot of things that have happened. For example, there's been raises to employees, there's raises being considered to employees. Uh, some of the council members ran previously and said that we were in great shape financially, that there were no problems. However, the problems were there. As, uh, City Manager Rob Houston mentioned, that it was brewing in the background, right? So that means that someone knew. And, uh, you know, uh, there's levels, there's certain levels of oversight that, uh, we have here. City manager, city council, and our vice mayor is our, uh, city auditor. And how did that slip through? Uh, that's, that's the question. So I feel that this is either, uh, an honest mistake by someone, possibly mismanagement, maybe corruption or, uh, incompetence. So I think that we need to look at that and, uh, make sure that we, uh, focus on the right things. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Liz Ruiz, I'm Kaufman. Um, first of all, I wanted to say that, um, I was disappointed with, uh, the lack of attention given to the budget. I think for me personally, it was hard to find information related to these workshops. I know that the dates were mentioned at the last council meeting and, um, we have a transparency page on our website. And it's really good at documenting dot information related to last year's budget, but I didn't see anything on this year's budget. And I think because we have such a big deficit, it's more important than ever to get as much information from the public on what to do. Because a lot of us are proud of our city. A lot of us enjoy all the activities, all the services provided by our city. And if we're going to have to pick and choose what's going to get cut, then, you know, everybody should have the opportunity or even the knowledge that, you know, these meetings are happening and that they can submit comments. And, um, you know, I'm, I would have tried my best to, to put more things online. I'm only one person. I'm a scientist, so by nature, it's really hard for me to, to make things a little easier to digest. But, um, and it's not my, it's really not my job, you know? I'm, I'm pretty overwhelmed with what's happening in my community right now and, and helping out where I can. And it's, and I know that the rest of the community is feeling probably the same. So it's, it's really, I can see that as already a challenge to get, on getting attention. But, um, one off on that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, um, was just, you know, as far as the utility users tax goes, I acknowledge that I'm in a financial situation where I don't mind it. But I think, you know, I think it would be a challenge for the community, um, especially a lot, uh, if, for, for landowners, um, landlords, um, who rent, who probably have to pay a lot of these utilities. Um, you know, that might be something to consider, what, what's the feasibility on, on that passing based on that? Um, and I don't know, I, I honestly don't know if people would vote for this. And so my instinct would be to, to go further out where we, I think you said later on in, in not November, to pay less just because of the high risk. Um, and my other comment was, I, I feel like if, if this doesn't pass, I think we should really start looking at raising and bringing back the utility funds because I do see a lot of concerns with people, um, you know, thinking about mismanagement. And so maybe focusing on bringing those to the ballot, which guarantees that those funds will be used for what they're specified for and, you know, not other things.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you guys for the opportunity. Uh, Council, I just wanted to bring to attention a couple of things. Um, I've been attending, attending more council meetings recently. I know you guys have seen my face around. Um, and so one of the things I often hear is about corruption. Um, I, I just implore the residents, I implore, uh, uh, my members, if there's corruption, to bring it out. You know, I, I think we as a community, I'm an, I'm an employee here, I've been here sixteen years. My children attend school here, I've been here for a long time. Uh, if there's corruption, bring it out, bring the evidence, showcase it, you know? I think, um, everybody would, would champion that person that brought that type of information alight and brought that truth to light. So, so, so I, I would say come correct, um, come with your information and not just allegations. Let's make sure that we're being responsible when we're talking about corruption, because those are big allegations and make sure that we're doing the responsible thing. As far as the, uh, users utility tax, um, I kind of spoke to this last year. Um, I would agree with the sentiment that Southgate has fallen behind. Um, HP, Linwood, Cudahay, Downey, all these people were allowed to surpass as far as revenue, as far as an additional stream of revenue. Now, like I said last time I was here, you could look at this from the aspect of previous council, previous mayors wanted to not tax, you know, add an additional tax to residents here. But at this point, if we're being fiscally responsible, we're looking at our budget. It's just run its course at this time, you know? And I'm not just saying that as an employee. I, I come from a union background. Um, uh, my union is SCIU. We've looked at the city's budget and we know that the city is going to be in trouble if they don't take some type of action in the next few years. So I would implore you guys to look at those numbers, look at those budgets, crush those numbers. We're already being told by our department heads that we're going to cinch the belt. We're going to find savings at some cost. And that cost typically is going to come at the cost of some type of service or some type of, um, cut to, to, to staff, whether it be, uh, the jobs, whether it be, um, some type of infrastructure or CIP cuts that residents just aren't aware of at this time. You know, maybe it's programs, maybe it's the pool, maybe it's park services, whatever it may be. You know, there might be some cuts that residents just aren't prepared for. So I just wanted to, to make mention to that. And the last thing I wanted to make mention was the street lighting and landscape. Um, we know that's been running in a deficit for a long time. We made that adjustment with the sewer a couple of years ago. We need to figure out a solution here, you know? If it's going to, it's continually eating at the budget. If it's up to one point five million dollars now, what is it going to be next year and the year after that? We, we need to do something there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I guess you're the last one.
I guess I'm the last one. Uh, Jimmy Osada, Southgate resident, good evening again. Uh, first of all, I guess let me, let me go and start with, uh, saying that I really want to make sure I thank you all for your service. I know it's a huge responsibility to be in your roles, making difficult decisions. In some cases, easy decisions when you look at the numbers. But one of the key responsibilities of council members and staff, specifically council members, is, you know, making sure you're providing the fiduciary oversight of the city. And when you hear our Director of Administrative Services reference that for the last, what? I think you only refer, you went back to twenty nineteen, you're generating a deficit, structured deficit. There's still a deficit. You're generating more expenses than revenue that you're bringing in. So that's when we needed to start having these conversations. Yes, we got additional unexpected revenue, given the circumstances that we came across with COVID. That was a somewhat of a blessing in disguise for the city. But then is when we needed to have these conversations, not now. And now to kind of say that we have a strong fiscal oversight over the la, the city, but yet if we had that in place, we wouldn't find ourselves in a situation today. So when I hear that, I think we have to be a little bit more transparent about how we go about business. Uh, I think that's what helps bring about the trust from our community resident, from our community members, you know, our residents in our community. And there's a lot of folks that aren't here because of the political situation that we're navigating at the moment. So when we talk about having access and getting people to give input, there's no call and feature. How can, we, we don't have, they don't have a voice, right? We haven't given them a voice, regardless of whether they can vote or not. Uh, I really want to make sure I acknowledge, uh, Councilmember Avalos for referencing that we take a deeper dive into our budget, not just approve expenses without taking into account the sustainability around those expenses. You know, we all believe that we have some critical services, that services that we provide our residents and that continues to be at the forefront. But when you take action and you approve expenses without taking into account the sustainability of those expenses, that creates this problem, that creates a lack of sustainability, which is what we're encountering now. So now we find ourselves in a position where, yes, we can propose cuts. We can say it's going to take some, um, somewhat smoke and mirrors when it comes to cutting positions that haven't been hired in, you know, how many years? I think it kind of goes back to asking ourselves, what can we do now? And have we done everything we can with our existing budget? When we're looking at the infrastructure and how we can sustain it with the revenue, limited revenue that we bring in before we try to balance this budget on the backs of our residents? So thank you all for your hard work. I know there's a lot more work ahead of us, but I will echo the sentiments of, you know, one of our residents here is, why is this on the back end of every agenda? Why isn't the budget at the forefront? We know we've already had a four million dollar deficit and now it's eight million dollars. Thank you very much.
Okay, closing the audience and do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have, uh, three emails. Uh, the first one is from Maria Chavez, expressing strong opposition to the proposed utility tax. Uh, Ms. Chavez stated that an additional tax would place an undue burden on already struggling community. She criticized the city leadership for lack of transparency, referencing their recent disclosure of the city's significant financial deficit and questioning how such information was not previously known. Ms. Chavez accused the city manager, finance department, council and specific council members, including Vice Mayor, Auditor, Councilmember Hurtado and Councilmember Davila of negligence or a misrepresentation. Uh, she noted that both Davila and Hurtado had campaigned on the claim that Southgate was strong financial health despite of the structural deficit. Uh, so she further questioned why the city manager received a raise while the city was operating in a deficit, suggesting the cost cutting should be prioritized over imposing new taxes. Ms. Chavez included, uh, concluded by demanding accountability and answers from city, city leadership, urging them to provide solutions instead of passing a tax measure. Um, the second one is from Roberto Sanchez, requesting an update on the survey related to the proposed utility users tax. Uh, he asked whether the survey was conducted and what the results were. Mrs. Sanchez expressed disappointment over the city's eight million dollar deficit, stating that the financial issues appear to have been developing for some time now. He criticized the oversight of city leadership, um, and he accused, uh, leadership of prioritizing person, personal interests such as reelection or salary increases over transparency and fiscal responsibility. He called the current budget process inadequate and questioned why key presentations are made late at night shortly before approval deadlines. He strongly opposed, uh, utility users tax and instead called for accountability. And the last one is from Mr. Mario Dominguez. Um, he's strongly opposing the utility users tax revenue for city hall employee salary increases. He said that the tax should be used to grow general fund, uh, pay city obligations and fund major projects not to benefit employees financially. He expressed frustration over what he sees as a pattern of financial mismanagement, referencing the six million previously allocated for courthouse renovations that was redirected to cover other expenses now. He criticized the council for prioritizing internal city operations over residents' needs, describing it as a lack of transparency and accountability. He called for leadership change, urging the city council agendas to reflect the interests of city departments rather than, uh, those of the public. I'm sorry. Um, interest of city departments rather than those of public. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My eyes are crossed.
Okay. Madam Mayor, if I may just ask for clarification, for the benefit of the members that are here and those that are on, uh, YouTube. If we had the UUT in the election cycle of this November, twenty twenty five, we're looking at one point two million. Is that correct? If we have it in June, twenty twenty six, what would be the cost?
About two hundred and seventy-five.
Two hundred and seventy-five. And if we had it in November of twenty twenty six?
We don't have that estimate at this juncture. We'll look to get that.
Well, given the fact that we're having an election, city clerk, what would be the cost for a regular city council election?
It would be approximately the same as the June election.
The two hundred and seventy-five.
Yes.
So therefore, we're going to have to have an election. Adding this on would not add additional funding from our general fund, correct? That was already in our budget? Just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so with that, thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. Thank all of you for being here tonight. And, uh, this is a receiving file item, so can I get a motion to receive a file? Got a motion in a second? And?
Second.
Okay, so there was a motion in a second. Did you have a comment?
Uh, no, I'll hold off.
Oh, okay. So with that, do we do roll call or? So with that, do we do roll call or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, if we may, I would like to adjourn. I would like to adjourn in favor of our community and our immigrant community, letting them know they are not alone and that we stand united for them.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And we definitely need to continue being united. And also, I would like to adjourn in memory of my uncle, his name is, oh my God. On his memory. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.